If we could come to order when, when the clerk tells me we're ready. We're ready, okay, we're rolling, so. If I can get your attention up here and we'll come to order. Thank you, very good. First step is roll call. If the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember San Antonio.
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember O'Hara.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Here.
Mayor Ayers.
Here.
Record will show that all members of the city council are present this evening.
Okay, item three is the pledge of allegiance, if you can rise, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight we have four special presentat- or four, three special presentations and proclamations. The first one is presentation of the proclamation for red ribbon week, and then followed by the quarterly sheriff's update and the quarterly fire department update, so we'll start with proclamation for red ribbon week. Thank you, can everybody hear me? And if Nancy, if you could come up, Nancy Logan is gonna help me up here. Do you wanna hold these, you want me to hold them? Or actually, why don't I hold them while you explain? We're gonna start out with a little explanation of what ribbon, red rib- red ribbon week, yeah.
That's always a tongue twister. Anyway, thank you everyone, I am Nancy Logan with San Diego Alliance for Drug Free Youth, and we partner with the school district and the city on red ribbon week every year. Does everyone know what red ribbon week is? Sometimes they don't. Am I getting a yes from everyone? No no's? This is wonderful. You don't know? I'll tell you. In 1985, a DEA agent Enrique Camarena was kidnapped by the drug cartel, and tortured and murdered. And he, his, he was from Imperial Valley, and his family all rallied around and they wore red ribbons around their arms in support of him and to, you know, build a world against alcohol, drugs. And in those days, President Reagan was our president, and he got on board. And now, ever since then, throughout the entire country, red ribbon week is celebrated in support of a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And it's, it's nationwide, and it's, and we call it celebrate because we like to see people living a healthy lifestyle. Okay? And, okay.
Yeah, and, and so I'm not gonna put you through listening to it, what, ten or eleven times, whatever it is, so we're it's the same proclamation for each of the schools, but we're gonna bring up a representative from, at least one from each school, and first go through presenting them to each, each school, so did you want to announce? Uh, I was gonna read it at the end, once everybody's up here, yeah.
Okay, that's good too.
So.
Okay.
They have to wait.
What we will do is, I, I have representatives from many, many of the schools, not everyone could make it. I will call the school, and then students, if you wanna come up and say your name and what grade you're in, when I call your school, and then you can shake hands with the mayor and he'll give you a proclamation. Okay. San Diego Academy High School. La Costa Canyon High School.
Do you want him to stay?
Yeah, stay. You always have to have a group picture.
Okay.
Tell you what. Thank you, yeah, just stay up here. Oh, two of you, very good.
Okay, I just have to tell you kudos about these three young women. For the past month and ongoing, I have many, many, many seniors from La Costa Canyon and San Diego Academy, they are visiting elementary schools. And they speak to fifth and sixth graders in an assembly about their good choice to have never used alcohol, tobacco, or drugs. And these kids are, and many others, are visiting the elementary schools. And, thank you. Okay, thank you. Degano Middle School.
My name's Fisher Nelson, I'm in seventh grade.
My name's Morty Macy, and I'm in seventh grade.
El Camino Creek Elementary.
My name's Henry Smith, I'm in, and I'm in fifth grade.
Capri Elementary.
My name's Sylvia Gandhi, and I'm in sixth grade.
My name's Paloma Gandhi, and I'm in fourth grade.
Polacki Central.
My name's Colton Knightman, I'm in fifth grade.
Parkdale Lane Elementary.
I'm Joseph, and I'm in sixth grade.
Um, my name's Amelia, and I'm in fourth grade.
Alivenheim Pioneer Elementary.
My name's Jack Messina, and I'm in sixth grade.
My name's Luke Messina, and I'm in fourth grade.
La Costa Heights Elementary.
My name is Alex, and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Jackson, I'm in sixth grade.
We have one more. Come on up.
M E C C.
Good job.
Okay, go ahead. With that, I need one of these to read. So, what we'll do is, we'll, we'll read, and then I'm gonna bring the rest of the council down, we'll get a picture, we'll probably have to squeeze in a little bit. So, ready? You guys ready? Yeah. Proclamation, red ribbon week. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse affect individuals, families, and communities across the nation, and whereas we recognize the overwhelming financial burden to society of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, and whereas we recognize its negative impact on the health and success of our community, especially our youth, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified efforts by community members be launched to prevent drug abuse, and whereas red ribbon, red ribbon week, wow. I'll get it right by the end. Offer citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, and whereas schools, businesses, government, law enforcement, media, healthcare providers, religious institutions, and other community-based organizations will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing red ribbons and participating in drug prevention activities. And now therefore, I, Bruce Ayers, mayor of the city of Encinitas, and along with all the city council members, do hereby proclaim that the city of Encinitas joins other cities throughout the nation to declare the week of October 23rd to October 31st as red ribbon week at all these schools, and they each have their own, and encourage all citizens to join our commitment to a healthy, drug-free community in which, in which to raise a generation of healthy, drug-free youth. Thank you. Some can step up on the back, a few.
Taller in the back, some on the steps, some right here, try to get through. And then. You wanna turn your papers around so the proclamation side is sitting out? All right. Ready? Please.
One more, down the front, look at the front.
Yeah.
That was you.
Alex, Alex, all good?
Yeah, we're good.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, thank you, and as they leave quietly, we'll continue going. First up, presentation of the quarterly sheriff's update from Captain Watts.
Good evening, thank you very much, mayor and council. I appreciate the time that I get to share with you the hard work that our dedicated deputies have been doing out in the community. For example, we have Michael Whitney, who is with our community-oriented and policing and problem-solving unit, our cops unit. He works late at night, making sure that the issues in our downtown area and around town, that he's addressing those promptly. And then we also have Detective Ryan with us tonight, too, so. I definitely appreciate the hard work that these two gentlemen do for us, along with the other deputies are out patrolling. And with that, we'll kick off the presentation. When we're looking at our overall crimes against persons the year 2025, year-to-date compared to 2024, I am proudly able to say that we've seen a decrease by 12%. I think that that is important, and sometimes I feel like that is supported by that proactive work that the deputies are out there doing. Our taking out of the overall crimes against persons, when we just look at assaults, our assaults have decreased also by 12%. If you do see that the increase in August and September, I was a little kinda wanted to dig a little deeper on that, why did we have that increase? And it looked like what I was able to find was in August, five of those assaults were actually against our deputies. So they were victims of assaults themselves. And then going into September, our, for whatever reason, our domestic violence cases went up by double. And then we also had seven additional assaults on our deputies. So that contributed to a large amount of that spike. And then moving along, crimes against property. Overall, crimes against our property has decreased by 24%. And that is, I think, related to our, you know, patrolling our business districts, really being out in the community, doing those extra patrols, those foot patrols, and over at our retail centers, by being a presence. Burglaries have decreased by 30% year-to-date compared to this time last year. And with that, I will say that, you know, we are starting to go back to, it's getting darker earlier. And so we have adjusted some resources to stay ahead of, we've had that South American theft group that usually starts becoming active during this time, because they take advantage of that nighttime coming quicker, so they can, you know, access backyards from trails, they look for lights to be off, and then they, you know, jump a back fence and, and break into homes. So we have adjusted some resources to make sure that we have more additional resources out there during those times. We've also put out some ghost cars out in the community, so that it looks like a visual deterrents, so that if we do have people that are coming from out of town, that are driving through our communities looking for a, a, an easy target, that they will see those cars and, and go elsewhere. So I think that with that proactiveness, I think that with the 30% decrease, I think we have been able to stay ahead of it, and I hope that that will continue for the remainder of the year. Our vehicle thefts have also decreased by 20%. So, also with the, the vehicle theft, the catalytic converters, that's been a little bit of a concern due to like the heavy metal prices increasing. A lot of times, they will target those catalytic converters, so they can get out some of those precious metals. So I think with our additional presence, those extra patrols in our neighborhoods, I'm hoping that that will continue to be decreased as we go out throughout the year and finish the year up. Our larceny, petty theft, shoplifting, that's also decreased by 12%. We've really worked with our retail establishments to do proactive details, be more of a presence in their parking lots to deter those types of crimes. Proactive measures. So calls for service, the way the chart should read is, as our calls for service decrease, then my expectation is that our deputy-initiated activities increase. So if they're not responding to as many radio calls, 911 calls, that their proactivity within our community should, they should have more time to do proactive responses and, and activities. So as you can see, our calls for service, they actually did increase by 8%. But our deputy-initiated activities, and as you know, even Lasher, when I took over command, that was one of my priorities, was to make sure that we were proactive, and that we were out in the community being proactive. So, last year, we saw quite a big improvement, and so I had challenged the deputies, the station, to, let's even go on top of that, to let's build on that and continue to be out there. And we have increased it by a staggering 67%, which I couldn't be more proud of the men and women that are out there protecting our community. Thank you. I really, I, I really appreciate that, and I know that that the community is such a driving force, and the deputies with the response, the being a part of the community has been just so rewarding. So we'll continue those efforts, but I was so proud when I saw that 67%. Our arrests have decreased by 4% compared to this time last year. And then moving along. These are also those proactive measures. So our, under the influence, our intoxicated individuals that are out in the community, by being proactive, a lot of times, this is our downtown details that we're doing for the, for the Friday, Saturday nights, and now that we've entered into the sports, football season, some of that is gonna be Monday nights and Thursday nights as well. But, you know, our goal is, when we see those individuals that are either under the influence of illegal substances, or they have consumed alcohol to the point that they are no longer able to care for themselves, that we intervene and make sure that, for one, most importantly, they're not gonna get behind a wheel. And two, we can make sure that, that they're not gonna continue to drink, and then become a, a call for service from either us or the fire department, so. It's, it's important that we intervene and make those arrests when we see individuals that are exhibiting that behavior. And then below that, these are the municipal codes that we have started to enforce this year with the city and the, and the council's support. All these are the ones that we have actually done misdemeanor arrests for, that have gone to the city attorney's office for prosecution. So as you can see, camping on public property, we've arrested 72 individuals. Private property, 11. The use of vehicle, this is when we're do, out there in the night, and we see people that are sleeping and camping in their vehicles. We're contacting them, we've arrested 10, and so on. And then on the other side, this just represents, this chart represents the amount of municipal codes that we have enforced this year. And as you can see, that chart is continuing to grow, and there wasn't really anything to compare it to for 2024, so that's why we don't have a comparison. But we have taken these quality-of-life issues, and we have really prioritized those so that we can make change and we can improve the quality of life for the community. So that shows that, you know, we are taking a proactive measure. And then below that are gonna be some of the other municipal codes that we have started to enforce. The parking of recreational vehicles, we've had 107 citations. The smoking prohibition, 39. And then the vending, that's actually a vehicle code, but we found that we were able to use that for the individuals that are on our off-ramps, that are asking for donations, money. So we've been using that code to enforce those. Our traffic enforcement. So another one, you know, we would think that is our citations and our enforcement activity increases, I would hope that we would be able to reflect that we've had a decrease in collisions. If people are more aware, they're paying more attention, that hopefully our collisions go down. And that is what we have seen, our DUI arrests did increase, because we were very proactive, and we're continuing to be proactive in making those traffic stops at night, and getting the impaired drivers off our roads prior to a collision. Our traffic collisions overall have decreased by 9%. And then our citations have increased by 10%. And then I did break down on the actual collisions, what they involve, so motor vehicle, that's gonna be a, a vehicle-on-vehicle, a fixed object, that can be anything that is other than a vehicle, like a, a pole, a, a roundabout, anything like that, parked motor vehicles, as you can see. But I think that with the proactive measures that we have done, I'm hopeful that, you know, I, I I don't like that the enforcement has to be the mechanism for change, but I recognize that it is important. But if we could just have the community and driver behavior recognize how important it is to follow those roadway, the speeds, stopping at those stoplights before, you know, at the red, stopping at stop signs, giving right-of-way to the, the bicyclist. That's really the overall goal, is to change that driver behavior. Our cops team has been busy, as Deputy Whitney will contest to. But they have been doing a lot of our shop, shoplifting details, where they will actually be undercover, they will work with the retail establishments to catch the individuals that are in their store, that are shoplifting from them. We've done several of those, and out of those, there were six arrests for individuals that were shoplifting from our retail establishments. ABC minor decoys and the shoulder taps. You know, for me, one of the most important things is protecting our youth, and part of protecting our youth, like the red ribbon week, is keeping those illegal substances away from our children and, and out of their hands. So the ABC minor decoys are something that we're gonna continue to do, and it's important because, you know, we do get, one of these actually, was a report from the community that one of the, one of their children said, hey, everybody talks about they go to this place that they want to get alcohol. That's concerning. So we immediately did, put together an undercover operation, where we sent in a juvenile under our direction, under our watch, and they were successfully able to buy alcohol from this establishment. So the, there is obviously recourse, we arrested the, the clerk, and then the establishments itself gets a fine for ABC. So we have done several of those, and those resulted in four arrests. One of those four arrests was actually a repeat offender, so the person got arrested a second time. And then the establishment got a second notice from ABC. But these are all things that are extremely important, the shoulder tap, that's when we have underage youth that are in the parking lot, that are asking patrons as they come in, that are over 21, to make a purchase for them. And that did result in one arrest, we did have a patron that bought the alcohol to give to that minor. So the more that we can do of these, to keep these substances out of our youth, I just don't know what more, or how more important that can be, and we will continue those efforts. Also, the alcohol over, over-service, we do go into our establishments in the evening to monitor, observe, to make sure that these establishments are not over-serving patrons that have, are exhibiting signs of already being intoxicated. So we'll continue to do those. Those did not result in any violations, but that's something that we will continue to push forward. And then our Encinitas downtown detail. That is the Friday, Saturday, that we have our deputies that are down there. They're really walking around, being a visible presence. A lot of it is just education and interacting with the community. But it did result in five arrests. Two of them ended up being DUI-related, because the individual actually got in their car and tried to back, back up, and one hit a sign, and the other, the deputies were able to intervene before they were able to drive away. So we did have five arrests in those. Our community events, that's something that we're doing all the time. Today, we actually did ice cream with the community, that was a great event, I love doing those. And then we're, obviously, we're putting on trainings, we go to our local schools and do trainings for them. The downtown walks, that's something that, as you all know, is another very important to me, and that's when myself, our lieutenants, our cops team, we just walk downtown, we check in with all our business owners, or their employees, to make sure that they are in, they're feeling like it's a safe environment for themselves and for their patrons. It gives us the opportunity to have those face-to-face relationships, that now it's almost a first-name relationship, which I so much appreciate. But it allows us to understand the concerns and be able to proactively address those concerns immediately. We don't have to wait for it to fester and become a bigger issue. So those have been very rewarding, and it, it, it actually reached our neighboring cities, and now they have requested it, too, so. I'm getting a lot of walks in, I'm hoping that I'll lose some, get in better shape, but it's been, yeah, it's been rewarding. And then once again, our school presentations. We have our, our own details, and then our PACE details. But the unit itself is responsible for 35 felony arrests, a lot of those are gonna be our proactive cases that they're following up on, or when they're out in the community. And then misdemeanor arrests, 97, so that's, 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 that's a big number for, for a, a unit. 97. So that's a big number for a unit. So they are out there, they're working hard. And then I always put these in there because bicycle safety is so important, and it's so important not just for our youth or for our adults that are riding the bicycles, but when our parents are making the decisions to buy these electric bikes, I want them to have the education to know what they are buying, and what is legal, what is not legal. We have a lot of, let me go to the next one. The e-motocycles, that's one that we see out there. We are being very proactive with our enforcement on these e-motocycles. A lot of these have the capability of 60 miles an hour, and it's alarming when we see, you know, a youth that doesn't even have a driver's license, that has a vehicle that is capable of going 60 miles an hour, and it does require a motorcycle license. It's not legally allowed on our roadways. So we are taking those, we're impounding those e-motocycles when we do come in contact with them, and then, of course, we notify the parents. These are just some pictures, some fun pictures from some of our community events that we do. And then focuses for 2025. This has changed. You know, there's one thing about our community is they rise up. We've had some challenges. We've had some issues as a community, and this community rises. And roadway safety and Vision Zero is going to be a top priority for me. Making sure that our roadways are safe for all that use them, and the goal of Vision Zero will be a priority. One life is one too many. Thank you. But I will say that this community is a community that wants to be a part of the solution. This is not just a law enforcement issue. It's not a city issue. It's not an elected official issue. It is a community issue. And, you know, I don't always have the answers, and I'm not afraid to say that I'm not the smartest person in the room, but I'm smart enough to surround myself with the smartest people. And this community has provided that for me. They've come, they've met with me, they've offered advice and solutions that we could work together to address these issues. And I can't, I couldn't be more thankful for that. And I hope that, I hope they feel and understand that, how sincere I am when I say that, that this is a community issue, and if we don't address this as a community, then I don't think, I think we get a lot further if we do. So I'm very appreciative of that. DUI enforcement, the city has funded two more deputies that will be for DUI enforcement for our night shifts. They will also be doing extra enforcement, but it's going to be important for me that when people come here to visit our establishments, that they understand that if they get behind a vehicle while intoxicated, there's a very high likelihood they will be stopped, and they will be arrested. There's other options. There's ride shares. There is no excuse. And, you know, I always cringe when people say, oh, it was a DUI accident. There's no accident when you're under the influence of alcohol and you choose to get behind a wheel. That is not an accident. You made that choice. So we are going to take zero tolerance on that, and I'm excited. I actually will go before the Board of Supervisors next week to get the final approval from the Board of Supervisors so that we can go ahead and put people in place for those positions. So thank you for the support for that. And then our e-bike education enforcement, you know, a lot of it really is education. I hope that the parents that are here, that they have seen us at the schools, they have seen us interacting with the children who are riding these bikes. We were all kids once, I get it, but we want them to be safe. So we are constantly giving that education, providing that foundation for them to keep them safe. On the other side of that, there is enforcement when it needs to happen, but we will reach out to the parents when we do that. It's usually a last-case option for us. I would rather the child right-of-way knowing that what they were doing probably wasn't smart, and they can learn from that. And then, obviously, our unhoused outreach and enforcement will continue to do that in partnership with the city. But I am proud that our roadway safety and Vision Zero is at the top of our list, and you have my commitment that we will continue to adjust those resources to make our roadway safer for all. And then here's some resources. I put this up every time, just in case people have questions on the non-emergency line, or if they would like to submit a Crime Stoppers tip. And one of those ABC details with one of the establishments, excuse me, actually did come through a Crime Stoppers tip, so very thankful for that. You also have the My Encinitas app. Thank you for all those who use it. We definitely appreciate it. And with that, that concludes the presentation. And open up for questions.
Do we have questions of clarification? I think we have one public speaker.
Yes, we do.
Okay, so why don't we take the one public speaker? Is that okay?
Ellen Burr.
That was a fantastic report. I wish I had seen it before. But I'm here mostly because I observed and watched the mobility and traffic safety meeting the other night, and there were some things that came up that I think could and should be addressed, maybe even right now. There seemed to be some confusion over what is an incident versus what is an accident, and at what point does an accident not be an accident, but be an incident. Also, a question of the citations. And this is probably because sometimes you could have an overcount. If you have, okay, so there's a guy, and he's driving erratically, and he rolls through the stop sign, and he gets pulled over, and it turns out he doesn't have a valid license plate, he doesn't have registration, he doesn't have insurance, and there's a pipe and a baggie on the seat next to him. So is all of that one, or is that five or six citations in one incident? Or I just don't, I would like to know, to get the count right, how many are we talking, because we don't want to overcount, but we don't want to undercount either, so that we kind of know how many SCOTF laws do we really have? Is it a handful, dozens, hundreds? And furthermore, something that came up was, and the deputy said that it could be done, is to know the residents of the people in these, because we are a transit major place for the I-5, for Carlsbad and Vista and other cities. And we will always be that, but we need to, education only goes so far, so we do need to enforce our laws. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay. And I don't know, did you want to explain the, that's a good question.
That's a great, it is a great question. So for the purpose of my presentation, one citation was counted as one. However, on that citation, there could be multiple offenses. So like what was just said, you know, we could pull somebody over for running a stop sign, however they have a suspended license, or any other kind of infraction that would have been cited. So the Mobility Commission had asked for a further breakdown so they could really quantify the number. So that was why they really dissected those, instead of just saying, we had this many citations, to help answer that question. The vehicle collision versus incident, so if we get called to private property between two drivers, and they decide to do an info exchange, and they do not require an actual police report, then that would be an incident. So what would generate a collision would be when we go ahead and initiate an investigation and provide a collision report for those. So I hope that clarifies.
I think so.
Because we do get called quite a bit for, and sometimes it can be passerby's that observe the collision, and then we respond, and either they're no longer there, or they said, oh, you know, we're exchanging our insurance information and don't require a crime report. So that would be another incident. And then the resident, we didn't have, or we do not have the mechanism in place that really captures our inputting of the citation on whether the person is a resident or non-resident. However, that was, that's a perfect example of what was brought to our attention by the community, saying, you know, that would be very helpful, so that we could see if, you know, our offenses are being committed by commuters that are just traveling through our city, or if it is our residence. So I had directed our traffic division to try to quantify those, and when they are going through the citations manually, to recognize and identify the driver's home address, so that we could try to capture that. I think that's an excellent idea, and I think that's a statistical report that would, it would be helpful and beneficial.
Excellent. Thank you. With that, Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you. Great support, great report, and we appreciate all that you're doing. It's clear that you don't have any time to sleep. Just a couple, two quick questions on the report. You mentioned the increase of 67% initiated activity and how that leads to lower arrest rates. And I just wondered if you could elaborate, maybe give an example for people who are wondering how that correlates and what that means.
Yeah, so if we've been extremely proactive in the community, you know, it is hard to quantify by us being proactive what we've actually prevented from happening. So I think by our proactivity, by being out in those community, out in the community, and some of the hard work that we did early on this year with our enforcement of our municipal codes, and some of those intoxication, under the influence, I do think that we have seen a result in a drop in that behavior. But I think it was because we took a very, a zero-tolerance stance, and we proactively addressed it.
Super. I appreciate the explanation. And then, just kind of following through on a couple of the questions where we talked about, or you mentioned the, not always wanting enforcement to be first, you know, I think it's important for all of us to remind everybody that in a lot of these instances that we see around the city, there is a service-first approach in certain cases when it's applicable. And I was wondering, do we, do we track percentage? I thought at one point we tracked percentage accepted to services and percentage decline. Do we still do that, or is that something we could do in the future?
So the sheriff's office doesn't. That's when we refer those individuals over to the city, for the caseworkers.
Perfect.
Yeah, exactly.
Because that'll be something we can refer, sheriff will refer to caseworkers when they come in, and we'll be able to track that.
Yes, we will be bringing our case management and outreach to city council in November for approval. And yes, they will definitely work with the HOPE team, and we will track that, as well as we are using the HMIS system.
Fantastic. I appreciate it. You guys should keep up the good work, and we're grateful for your service.
So, you know, I look at the time we're spending on this, but then I also look at the budget we spend on these two departments, and it is over 40% of our budget. So I actually think we probably haven't spent enough time hearing and interacting with both of you to focus on this, because it's probably one of the main things most citizens want to know. So bravo, and I appreciate the time we're taking. And you gave this status. Are the two new traffic deputies, are they onboard, and do they have cars, and are they hitting the ground running now? Because it was as of July 1st for the budget item.
Correct. So we had to bring that, those positions before the County Board of Supervisors for approval, even though they are funded and budgeted by the city. We still need the Board of Supervisors to be able to give us those positions. But I do have that hearing next week, so I'm hopeful that, it's on consent.
Okay.
We'll see. And then, and then we can start to hire those bodies.
And do you need a city council member or mayor to show up at the meeting, or any citizens to show up? You know, we're there to support you.
I appreciate that.
I love all the, you've been keeping busy, there's no doubt about it. But I didn't hear you mention the maximum enforcement efforts that we've done, five monthly? You went, done one a month. So if you could give a little background on that.
Yeah. Thank you very much for bringing that up. One of the strategies that we looked at to try to maximize our resources out in the community for our roadway safety, we were looking at how can we get more enforcement and get the driver behavior to change. So looking at our resources, we started a target enforcement. We were picking one day a month. And it started out with our, for example, our detective units, who are usually suit and tie, they were getting, dressing in uniform, getting in patrol cars. Our cops teams were also out there. So by the time we went through the station, it gave us an extra 18 to 20 cars that were out in our community doing a focused enforcement on our roadway safety. It expanded from there. Then I got a little selfish, and I reached out to our other stations within the sheriff's office, Vista, San Marcos, Poway, and I asked for some of their resources to come in, and they did provide those resources. So we had an additional 15 to 20 motors. But I wasn't satisfied yet. So then I reached out to some of our surrounding partners, our agencies, Oceanside, Carlsbad, San Diego Police Department, Trula Vista, and so on, and asked if they would provide us with some of their personnel to help us. And they graciously did. And at the last one that we did, we had over 40 motors from all over the county that were here to help us. So I was very much appreciative of that. This is an effort that we will continue to do, because I do think it's important. And I do think that the drivers have recognized it. It's hard not to. I was getting, on the last one, I had people from the community, my family was sending me screenshots of the Waze map, and it was nothing but, you know, enforcement, enforcement all over the entire city. Some of them were poking fun at me. But I think that, you know, ultimately, what we're trying to do is just bring attention to our roadways and the safety of everybody that's on it. And it has seemed to be very positive.
And then just a couple more comments from me. The, I've done the walk-along. I walked along with you, rather than a ride-along. I've done ride-alongs too. And not only was it a great experience to walk along and talk to the business owners with the sheriff and with the various deputies, I've noticed now, as I interact with people downtown, the downtown business owners, they're beginning to see it. They're getting used to seeing deputies come in, and they're developing relationships that the information flows much better. So bravo, keep it up. We talked a lot about enforcement, but that doesn't mean we're still not doing the HOPE. And so every time you do a homeless action, you actually go out there with a cross-functional team, and we offer services to those people too. So I don't want to lose sight of that, but along with the enforcement that's necessary. And then my last comment, and by the way, thank you, this is wonderful. Can you put the PowerPoint online and email it to us too, so we can have that? I appreciate that. And with that, Deputy Mayor Lines.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain Watts, for your good work. I did want to touch on something that I didn't hear in your presentation, because I think it's really notable, and that is how responsive you've been when we've had the issue of our ICE activities here in Encinitas recently. I appreciate that you've reached out to the community to make sure that you're visible and that you're there to protect our residents, and that they, if they ever feel threatened, are always to call on you and your deputies to come. And you're helping to educate all of us on what we can do locally, and then what the rights are of the federal agents as well. So I encourage you and your team to continue to help us understand that, and to continue to be available to the community as we need you. I know that we've developed improved communication with our federal agent leaders, and that you're the primary contact. And I just want to give you a good pat on the back for that. And please keep up that good work. I do also want to call out that on October 29th at noon, you are doing one of your community outreach events at the Cardiff Library. And I think, if I remember correctly, this is hosted by the Cardiff 101 Business Association, but businesses and residents are welcome to come, everyone's welcome to come. Again, that's October 29th at the Cardiff Library, and it is what can your sheriff do for you? So you're really, you know, asking the question, and you want to listen to what the public input is. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you. Phenomenal report, and obviously the efforts are paying out, and it's, the professionalism is at the top notch across the board of the gentlemen sitting there, so we couldn't thank you enough. That resources, it's been set up here, all the other stuff, but the resources slide that you just put up, that one, can we get either business cards, so that as we do the walkthrough, so that businesses have a place to either put it somewhere, so it's visible, or a stack that people can take? And could we also add that to the app, and make sure that that gets, you know, that this should be a primary location for people to be able to get this resource, and not to go find it in the moment that they need it type thing? So, really appreciate everything, thank you.
Okay, with that, I think we're done with this item, thank you, and we'll move on to the fire department.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. It's a tough act to follow with Captain Watts. Usually I would take the, this moment to kind of make fun of how long he took. But instead, I'm gonna kind of give him a little bit of props here, because the amount of work that our sheriffs do is amazing with how many personnel they have. And the more the prevention side that they do, and the enforcement side that they do, it helps us on our side with lower medical aids and traffic collisions, and it gives my team out on the floor some time to breathe as well. So the collaboration we have with our sheriff's partners and the fire department is, it's priceless. So I just want to thank them for all their work, I know they do a lot, and we see it in the fire stations as well, so. But with that, thank you for having us. We're gonna go over our data, probably not as in detail, because we don't have as much time as Captain Watts took, but January to September, year-to-date, we don't have all of our October data yet, it hasn't come in yet, but we'll bring you through September of all of our response data, and I'm actually going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Sanchez to present this information tonight.
All right, thank you, Chief. Council, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Jorge Sanchez here, Deputy Fire Chief. I'll go over the last nine months of this calendar year. I'll be presenting some fire department operations and incident response patterns, mutual aid exchanges and performance metrics of the last nine months, starting January 1st through the end of September 30th. In the city of Encinitas, the Encinitas Fire Department actually responded to 6,114 incidents from that timeframe. As you can see here in this slide here, we have 72% of those calls were medical incidents that accounted for 4,406 medical emergencies. We also had a variety of other calls, vehicle collisions, 438. We had 7% that were alarms, and 5.7%, which equated to approximately 351 fire incidents that we responded to. Now, the 6,114 calls, they were in jurisdiction and out of jurisdiction, and we'll get into that a little bit more of what that means. This is a detailed incident breakdown. If you guys see your packet there, it's probably the, not the cover page, but page two of it, you'll see a breakdown of the 6,114 calls. This is a synopsis of the priority categories. We have fire and medical, as well as other incidents. But once again, this kind of goes over the categories that we responded out of the 6,114 incidents. 93 were incidents of structure fires, 113 other fires, we had some vegetation fires as well, we had vehicle fires, and 4,207 medical responses with an additional 136 medical stage calls. Hazardous conditions, rescue operations, and service assist calls with, throughout our jurisdiction. This here goes over the jurisdictional response summary. Out of the 6,114 calls that we responded to, 5,237 of them were unique to the city of Encinitas, that was within our jurisdiction. However, we do have mutual and automatic aid agreements with surrounding agencies, so we did extend our services to Carlsbad, Rancho Santa Fe, Solana Beach, Del Mar, and other agencies, which includes San Diego City, and in some cases, other agencies to the north of us here in the North Zone. As you can see that we did respond 399 incidents to Carlsbad, 146 to Rancho Santa Fe, Solana Beach, 122. And what you don't see here, we also responded 70 to Del Mar, and 140 to other jurisdictions, totaling the 6,114 calls. What we have here is unit commitment analysis. So I talked about the 6,114 calls in jurisdiction and out of jurisdiction. However, we don't always send just one unit to these incidents, many times we send multiple units depending on the emergency. So with that, we had a total of 11,051 total unit commitments from Encinitas Fire Department. 9,938 of those were committed to the city of Encinitas. 1,113 of those were outside of our jurisdiction to the surrounding agencies. Here we have a mutual aid exchange balance. What this is, is the department provided 471 hours and 39 minutes of aid to other jurisdictions, while we received 885 hours with five minutes of assistance, resulting in a net aid exchange, excuse me, of 413 hours. This indicates that Encinitas did receive more support than it provided. We provided to Carlsbad, excuse me, here, give me a second. Yes, to Carlsbad, to the right there, that's a positive, we provided 117 hours to Carlsbad. You'll find that in your packet. Then we provided to Del Mar, 42 hours. We received from Rancho Santa Fe, 164 hours, from Solana Beach, 281. Other jurisdictions totaling 127 hours, for a net exchange of receiving 413 hours from other jurisdictions. Outgoing aid by jurisdiction, so we provided, we provided 198 hours to Carlsbad, Solana Beach, 94 hours and change, Rancho Santa Fe, 71 hours, and Del Mar, 53 hours. What you also don't see here is the other jurisdictions with, which totaled another 53 hours. That totals the 471 hours that we gave out to other jurisdictions. Now, the incoming aid was the 885 hours that we received, that netted the 413 hours of difference. Solana Beach providing 375 hours and 46 minutes, although one of their units, Medic 237, which responds out of Solana Beach Fire Station, they provided the bulk of those hours, which equated to 279 hours. To give an example, they provided 375, 279, which is almost 100 hours of the 375. The remaining 96 hours were provided by fire resources from Solana Beach into Encinitas. Also, we received an approximate 196 hours from the Rancho Santa Fe Medic 261, out of the 236 hours. So they do have three ambulances, what you don't see there is Medic 262 provided six hours, Medic 264 provided another 20 hours. Collectively, the ambulances alone provided 222 hours. The fire resources provided 14 hours of those 236 hours that Rancho Santa Fe provided. And again, it goes into Carlsbad, they received 81 hours from us, and 100, we received 81 hours of 190 unit commitment hours. Response times. The Encinitas demonstrated a pretty good performance across all multiple metrics. The call processing time, the average, call processing time is from the 911 call comes into dispatch, and they process that 911 emergency. The average was 53 seconds call processing time. Then at that point, it gets turned over to the fire department, and that's when we get the alarm at the fire station. Once we get the alarm and we go responding on our mobile data computer on the fire engine, that turnout time averaged 1 minute 9 seconds, and the 90th percentile was 2 minutes 7 seconds. From that point, once we hit responding, we're considered travel time. We averaged approximately 4 minutes and 53 seconds of travel time throughout our jurisdiction, and the overall response times was 7 minutes 11 seconds. So the Encinitas Fire Department maintained an effective emergency response throughout our operations, handling over 6,000 calls, and actively participating in reciprocity and mutual aid, giving aid out and giving, receiving aid from other jurisdictions. We had 72%, which was mainly medical aid calls, as we saw earlier, and we have a strong working relationship with bordering agencies that we have that reciprocity. And I feel like we had an excellent response time, with 71% of our responses achieving under eight minutes total response time across the, across our metrics. Now, the fire department also has a fire prevention division, and they stayed pretty busy these nine months. They have, they've had over 1,700 permit reviews and construction inspections of 773, with all the new construction going into place. They've been working with defensible space inspections, they completed 30 throughout our municipality, and they've engaged in 10 special event inspections. And we did have an open house October 4th, which I'm grateful, and many of you stopped by, and we thank you for that. It was very successful, and that was at our fire station, number five. We had over 500 attendees, it was, it was very busy. And it was, it was nice to see the community coming together, and the families, the children, and us engaging in the fire department with, with the community. It was outstanding.
You had free food too, so.
We did, we had free hot dogs and drinks for everyone, so.
Yeah.
That was nice. However, we didn't do it alone, our fire prevention assisted us, and we, we had other agencies that participated, SDGNE, we had the Red Cross there, we had TIPS as well, we had AMR ambulance, who brought their ambulance, and they interacted with the community. And we had Sparky, the dog, you know, walking around and keeping everyone entertained. But very nice event. We've engaged in five public education events, and we've done 16 fire investigations that have to do with fire-related incidents. That is all I have for the moment. I do want to fill you in on a few other activities that the fire department has been involved with, as well in partnership with AMR ambulance. So year-to-date, we've had 44 events, 24 public services, 17 educational events, three donated standbys from the ambulance company. And we've, we've taught collectively, year-to-date, 2,991 hands-on-only CPR to the community, which is, which is great. We do, we do perform CPR, excuse me, blood pressure checks at our Encinitas Community Center. Year-to-date, we've completed 270 blood pressure checks there, at the community center. We've also, every month, we do child car seat inspections, and we've completed 19 car seat inspections there at the community center. We're gearing up for CPRs in schools, so we, we partner up with AMR, and we have the fire department respond, not respond, but participate in the CPR in schools, which is fantastic. We get together with local schools, and during the PE hour, we bring out, we cycle everyone through the school to hands our CPR. We get the fire department there, the paramedics are there, a part of it, and we reach out to schools like Moranta, De Ganyo, we reach out to San De Guido Academy, Del Norte, and Earl Warren, all schools that are part of our CSA 17, San De Guido area. And I think that's, that's all I have at the moment, unless Chief would like to add anything else.
Yeah. I've got a couple of questions. First one is, I think you showed 30 property inspections, is that like going out, looking at wildfire susceptibility, that type of stuff? Or is that actual, like, new construction inspection?
The defensible space inspections are, more of that is, there are some community members that are asking for us to just come look at their properties, but there's also those that are selling their properties and have to have a defensible space inspection to put with the report with their property sale.
But that was only 30, and it seems like we'd have quite, in other words, you will take calls from residents if, and when the fire marshal has time, they'll come out and actually look at and give advice for things we can do? Because one of the things we're trying to do is get to the zone zero, trying to get the flammable materials five feet away from your house, especially in fire-prone areas like where I live in Olivenheim. But, so it sounds like there's an opportunity there for people to call in.
Correct, yeah. I mean, it is based on the availability that we have to come out to your home. We will do it, it just might not be at the timeframe that you want immediately, but we will make our way out there to inspect your home for defensible space and give some kind of feedback on how you can harden your home, provide a better defensible space, create a zone zero, and, you know, hit all the CAL FIRE requirements.
And then, second question is about trends in fires, and I've noticed more garage fires, and I'm curious whether you've seen a trend, and whether lithium-ion rechargeable batteries are the source of that, and what are signs people should look for to get those things out of their garage before they do turn on fire?
Yeah, I, right now, the numbers are trending around 80% of all garage fires, all trash truck fires are caused by lithium-ion batteries. Most of them are going to be your DeWalt battery, or e-bike battery, your scooter battery, and usually it's caused by some kind of damage or using an aftermarket charger for the battery itself. So, you know, we're seeing a lot of youth who, you know, dropped their bike, crashed their bike, go in, plug it in, walk inside, and then now it's a garage fire later on, because there was damage to the battery. Same thing does happen with electric vehicles. We don't get as many of those, but once those do catch on fire from a garage fire or from another lithium-ion battery, those are hard to, to put out, it takes a lot of water. It can take up to 300,000 gallons or more water to put out an electric vehicle fire. So, things to look for, swelling, any heat that's coming from the battery. If you've dropped the battery, inspect it for damage, do not put it on a charger for at least three days. There are batteries that will sit and rest for three days before they catch on fire after being damaged. Do not leave your lithium-ion batteries plugged in overnight in your garage. If you do, they do sell pouches or metal containers that you can charge your lithium-ion batteries in. I also pay attention to your cellphones, right? Cellphones, if they're heating up, if they're really hot to the touch as you're charging them, that is a bad sign. There has been instances, not within Encinitas, but within the county, where a cellphone has caught on fire, and one of these was on a bed of someone who was charging it, and it caught their bedroom on fire. They were able to put it out pretty quick with some water and their extinguisher, but it did make quite a mess with that extinguisher. I don't know if you've guys ever used one indoors? But yeah, that would be my advice right now, is if you're gonna plug in lithium-ion batteries, don't do it overnight, and make sure that you inspect your batteries before you do it.
Okay. Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, thank you for the report, really appreciate it. Just checking on the 90th percentile, is that for, is that for our response times, or all of our times, or is that, is that for county-wide type model?
That's gonna be for our jurisdiction, it actually includes in and out of jurisdiction right now. So when we ran the numbers, for some reason, are in jurisdiction only numbers, we're not calculating, so it is a little longer. But I will say this, we are seeing a little bit longer travel times. But I will say this, we are seeing a little bit longer travel times. So our out-of, the dispatch time or the call processing time is, I'm gonna find that one for me. The call processing time is really good. Our dispatch does a great job. It is increased a little bit because of determinant dispatching or triaging now, so they take a little bit more time to ask additional questions to send their correct resource. So there is gonna be a little bit of delay there in the 30-second range.
Yeah.
Our turnout times are trending a little down, but still within a good number. And then our travel times are what's taking a little longer. Now, that could be due to Station 1 being at Station 3 right now. There is an increased response time to this downtown area. We do have an increase in call volume. Right now, we're trending to over 8,200 calls for this year, where last year we were about 7,900. So we're increasing almost a call a day as well as traffic calming measures, right? So we are providing narrowing lanes and some speed bumps and roundabouts, which do have an overall impact, but when we're looking at our response time specifically for each call, it's going up maybe 15 seconds. I think a good example would be the roundabout on 101. It only increased our call response times into that area about nine seconds. The last time I looked, it's been a few months, but it hasn't been a problem for us.
Copy. And then I go to the numbers of us receiving a net of, you know, the 413. So is there any reasoning for that? Is it partially because of the station locations or, you know, whatever?
Yeah, so, I mean, like Chief Sanchez said, we have, CSA 17 is our ambulance provider, right? So AMR is our ambulance provider, contract goes through the county. Now, each one of these ambulances is a CSA 17 resource, so they move around. When you look at Cardiff, Medic 232 and Cardiff, if they're on a call, Medic 237, thank you, is the one who responds. And they respond to the Manchester area much quicker than our 232 for some reason on the response polygons and times that we have. So their ambulances create almost 80% of that number. So we're, when we look at it as holistically, it looks like we're, you know, we're stealing everybody's fire engines, but we have to change that paradigm to an ambulance response and it's a shared resource that we have all together. So we provide a lot more, let's say in Carlsbad, where we rarely have an ambulance go in there because of the CSA 7 boundary that we have. There's a kind of a wall there. So all of our fire engine response, the 399 responses that we've had have been mostly fire engines, where again in a CSA 17, most of those numbers are from ambulances.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember San Antonio?
So I think, was it, what was it hours for the received from Solana Beach? Was it specifically for, I think it was for Medic 261? Was it like 200 and something hours?
For the incoming aid from them, the total was the 375 hours, right?
Yeah. But I think it was, you break it down to like 200 and something hours for just?
Correct.
Yeah.
So yes, you're right. So you're referring to Solana Beach, we received 375 and with that, so for Solana Beach, we received 375.
Yeah.
The medic provided 279 hours. And then we also have a supervisor. We have a supervisor for the ambulance that provided.
Jeez, thank you.
Happens to me too.
So we had 279 hours from that medic ambulance, plus the supervisor for the ambulance provided 24 hours, totaling them two alone, 303 hours of time into our city. So what leaves, what it leaves on the table is 72 hours of actual fire resources coming into our jurisdiction. So it is heavily on the ambulance. Same thing for Rancho Santa Fe. They had three medic ambulances that are part of the CSA 17 that responded quite a bit, with medic ambulance 261 from Rancho Santa Fe alone providing 196 hours into our jurisdictions.
Yeah. I mean, it's just an interesting number because obviously it's with the percentage of medical calls at 72% out of that whole pie chart and we get so much ambulance service from outside our jurisdiction. I mean, it's just an interesting number, you know, for.
It is and it's a good observation, you know, and it happens when our ambulances are out on another incident and then another incident comes in and we can't meet that. So we pull from either on the east side, Rancho Santa Fe, to the south of us, Medic 237 from Solana Beach. And we, for the CSA 17, we do a pretty good job of trying to come up with the best locations for those ambulances. I don't know if you remember, not long ago, we had a 12-hour unit that was a floating ambulance in the northern part of Encinitas. Well, we were able to capture those 12 hours and our Medic 232 at Station 2 in Cardiff was a 12-hour unit. So we were able to capture those hours and convert that Medic 232 into a 24-hour unit to hopefully reduce the numbers we're talking about right now. So they've had a positive impact.
Yeah.
And still, we're seeing some of these numbers from ambulances helping us in Encinitas.
Yeah. If I could add a little to that, so for this year, our Medic 235, which runs out of Station 5 out of Belour, they have a 31.03% unit hour utilization. And when we're looking at ambulances, we are looking at a unit hour utilization between 0.2 or 20% to 40% usage before we're looking for additional resources. So as we start seeing increased call volume, those numbers start to be something that we need to plan around to possibly add additional ambulances into the system.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
When you're looking at the additional resources we're pulling from other cities, right, or CSA 17 ambulances, once these numbers start jumping up a little bit, which I anticipate them to do with the call volume increase that we're seeing, we'll probably be approaching the county, CSA 17 and AMR and finding out how we can lower those unit hour utilization to better fit our citizens here and make sure that there's an ambulance that's close by. We'll start seeing our response times increase on the ambulance side and obviously we don't want to do that, so.
Perfect. Yeah, that's definitely something to explore in the future. Thank you.
Okay. I think that's it for our announcement. Thank you. You took almost as much time as the sheriff, just so we're, you know, but who's keeping score? Just let us defend the sheriff's honor here too. So we will now move on to item five, which is oral comments. And oral comments are public comments that are not on tonight's agenda. We allocate up to 30 minutes for oral comments at the beginning of a regular meeting. Speakers typically are granted three minutes to address the council with no time donations permitted. And the chair has the authority to limit the duration of these comments as so long as it's done equitably to all speakers. Tonight, we have 16 speakers, so in order to manage our time and be fair to the members of the public here to participate in our regularly scheduled items, I will be limiting the oral comments to two minutes. So we got, so that's right around 30 minutes and that way we should get done.
And then did you want me to make the announcement about speaker slips must be turned in?
Yeah, and one thing that it's in our procedures, that once we start our oral comments, then that cuts off further oral comments, so we're gonna do that and it's what's written in the procedure, so we're following our procedure accurately. And with that, let's call the first, and if people could queue up up here, so we spend less time walking up.
And then just as a reminder, as the mayor stated, each speaker will have two minutes. The first three are Jim O'Hara, Patty Stottlemyre, followed by Judy Burlefein.
Okay. So just want to start off with a shout-out and a get well to River Smith, who was recently in an accident that a lot of us heard about downtown. And a heartfelt feeling of empathy and positivity to his parents, Zach and Betsy, who I saw on the scene. Last Wednesday, I was here at City Hall picking up a birthday gift I left in my office for my daughter and I got a call, "You need to come down to Auto On More right now. Something's happened." And I got down there immediately to what I can only call a high-profile incident here in town that was pretty astonishing to see. And in that, and I think the sheriff touched on this, I saw an amazing community down there. So everybody coming together, get at that truck, make space. As soon as you heard the sirens, people were clearing out the road to make sure the sheriff could get through, to make sure the first responders could get through. And what I can only call an impressive response, once the sheriffs and the first responders that our fire department showed up to control the crowd, to make space for the crowd politely, compassionately and professionally, as well as calm. There were a lot of people who were clearly shaken, at least 100 people witnessed this accident. I'm sure more, just to be on the conservative side of that estimate. And I just want to take a moment, again, to give a get well soon to River Smith. We're so grateful that the injuries you received or you experienced were limited to what they were and wish you a speedy recovery. And I also want to give a huge shout-out again to the community and I really want to thank our fire department and our sheriff's department. It was such a shiny example of how you collaborate together and how you were there, I was there from here to there in less than a minute and I counted, I'll close up, I counted multiple vehicles there within eight minutes, clearing the scene, getting people going. It was, it was pretty incredible. So that's it. Thanks to the community and thank you to our fire department and sheriff's department for that.
Patty. Patty, you can come up.
Stottlemyre, followed by Judy Burlefein, Andy, and then Gerald Tinksley.
Wasn't Ellen Burr in there? I thought you said.
Mayor, council, Patty Stottlemyre, just a little thing about smart cities. Let's see.
It is going to Amazon servers.
Oh, no sound. Doggone it.
When you leave your home, all modern vehicles are connected to the internet, so your automobile is being.
Oh, well.
Can hear it a little.
Is there any way to turn up the sound?
If you could hold the time. What we can do is we can go maybe to the next person and then Patty bring you back? Would that be okay?
Okay.
And then you'll get the full sound. So who was next? Judy?
Mine has no sound and it's very short. Hold on, I'll just give you a heads up. Okay, thank you. Thank you. First of all, I want to say that all crashes are bad collisions, whether they're on Encinitas Boulevard or 101 or anywhere else in the city, between autos and autos, autos and cyclists, autos and pedestrians, and I'm in favor of finding safer ways for everyone to get around. So one idea that'll be presented next week is to widen the Cardiff cycle track by making it two-way. And as Commissioner Medoc at the Mobility Commission stated, the wider two-way track that we already have is a lot safer because it provides more space for fast cyclists to pass slower cyclists. So wider is better. In addition, physical separation also provides another layer of safety, as this video demonstrates. So in the middle, this is on 101, the driver hit the curb stop and the wheel ripped off the axle. And what would have stopped the driver from running into the cycle track if they had not hit the curb stop? So paint doesn't really provide protection, but separated infrastructure does. Thank you and I hope you'll keep this in mind when we evaluate how we can keep everyone safe on 101.
Are you ready for Patty?
The audio is low.
Is it?
Pardon me? The audio is really low.
Okay.
So crank it up as much as you can.
Should I backtrack?
Go ahead, just start over.
Oh, okay. Oh, gosh. Can you be in charge?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Thanks a lot.
Within the home, its location, its usage, and all the data is going to Amazon servers. When you leave your home, all modern vehicles are connected to the internet, so your automobile is being tracked all the time. When you're going under a string of smart LED poles and smart LED lights on the highway and in the streets of your towns and cities, those form a wireless network and are tracking your vehicle. They're tracking all the devices on you, from smartphones to smartwatches when you're walking on the streets. So data is being collected 24/7 continuously on every human being whenever you are within these wireless networks. And it's obviously not good for health also because of all the electromagnetic radiation. In the long term, the plan is to pretty much lock up humanity in smart cities, which is kind of a superset of a 15-minute city. They've sold all the state and local governments and countries that smart cities are about sustainability and the good of the city. But in reality, the language from the UN and WEF and their white papers is all inverted. So their monitoring is really about limiting mobility and no car ownership. Right? Surveillance controlled via LED grid is why the smart lighting is there. Water management is about water rationing, noise pollution is about speed surveillance, traffic monitoring is about limiting mobility, and then of course, energy conservation is all about rationing heat, electricity and gasoline. Another concept one should be familiar with is called geo-fencing and that's, think of it as an invisible fence around you, where you cannot go beyond a certain point. And that will be related to your face recognition, digital identity and access control. Your smart contracts.
Okay. If you can cut it off there.
From your house.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Andy, followed by Gerald Tinksley and then Greg Young.
I have so much and I hope I get some of it in what I want, but for anyone who has not recognized it, how the abusive government, I'll just start out with this. Many abusive governments have come into power not by force, but with small steps, slow drips like water on the stove slowly heating up. When you give an inch to evil intentions, that inch quickly becomes a mile before you know it. Tyrannical governments often come into power gradually, initially presenting themselves as protectors of the people. Plato described this process, noting that a tyrant typically emerges as a champion whom the people support and nurture, appearing at first as a protector of their interests. I literally was listening to this guy over here bragging that they gave tickets to people that were sleeping, not harming anybody. And what you're seeing now is, in case any of you have missed the government of the old days of slavery, or in case you missed Nazi Germany and you wanted to be there when they were attacking the Jews and killing all the Jews, or killing and enslaving all the blacks in the beginning, well, they've got you focused on the new people to attack hate and blame for all of your troubles and that's the homeless or the vehicle dwellers. They've just, they are so powerful with their psychological operations, just like what they did in 2020. And they have you believing that the homeless are a threat. So first, little by little, they're stealing your tax dollars by ticketing you like crazy with everything, pushing everyone into poverty and then blaming these people for daring to be poor and homeless and treating them like dirt. So in case you missed the US government and the blacks and slavery and what they did at that time, in case you missed Nazi Germany, you're here. You're living it in the present. That's the homeless.
Is it Gerard or Gerald Tinksley? Okay. All right, we'll move to Greg Young, followed by Dave Dean and then Raul Vilmar.
Thank you, I'm Greg Young. 2031 Crest Drive, I'm supposed to give that, I believe. I am here to ask about security for the special election. I am here to ask about security for the special election on November 5th. What has been our nation's recent history of voter intimidation? Now with enhanced immigration enforcement, what if ICE was to show up? Are we prepared for the escalation of intimidation this could bring? What does it mean if they do? With ICE's ability to detain someone because of the way they act, speak, or look, regardless of citizenship, would we be able to assure that they are able and willing to vote? Would ICE presence alone, say in a parked vehicle, be intimidation? Should there be a nonpartisan observers of the voting area beyond the 25-foot distance from the polling place? What would their scope of action be? What regulations would observers need to follow? And if the nonpartisan observer sees voter intimidation beyond the 25-foot distance of the polling place, what responses would be advised? What is the city of Encinitas' policy and protocol if and when voter intimidation is evident? Would the response be different if the intimidation is from ICE? I ask you to seriously consider these questions, then ask yourselves. Should we, Encinitas residents, use the answers to these questions to guide us in being nonpartisan observers to protect our ability to vote without threat or intimidation? I respectfully ask that we follow up one week from today at the next council meeting to hear your replies. Thank you.
Yeah, and so with oral comments, if we can't respond here tonight because it wasn't on the agenda, and quite frankly, we can't respond next week because the agenda came out today for next week, but you can, we can refer you to staff and then talk to you offline very freely. Okay?
Good evening, Dave Dean. And I would like to say a few things about the Rock Garden. One, thank you Jennifer and Jim for your help this week on the things we talked about, so I appreciate that. Also, I wanted to share a story with you. I was working in the garden this week and a man came up and he said, "Are you Dave?" I said, "Yes, I am." He said, "I want to tell you, I left the country in 2017 and started traveling the world. And I've lived in 54 different countries since then." And he was working with Down Syndrome children around the world. And he said, "You know, I've traveled the world and nowhere in this world have I seen more positive vibes in a community garden than you have here in Encinitas." So that was just an amazing and touching story to the people of this community, the citizens, and the spirit of Encinitas. So wanted to share that with you. It made me feel good, and I think the citizens should be proud of their spirit here in Encinitas, too. Thank you.
Next is Raul Vilamar, followed by Scott Campbell, Melissa Scharbath, and then Lucy Solomon.
My name is Raul Vilamar. I own Encinitas Barbers. My dad opened it in 1980. My older brother, my younger brother, my two nephews, my brother's girl, and my adopted niece. We all work at the barber shop. We're still having problems with our parking. We have all these people walking in, talking about the parking. And they're not coming in because of the parking. They only come in once in a while. I look around, I see all these people that are nice and groomed. Okay? The gentleman, the gentleman that came in from the beer garden once said that, they said that a lot of people like to come in and have a nice dinner and some drinks. Okay, well, a lot of people like to come in and get groomed, you know, haircuts. A lot of people like to get their outfits done, Mrs. Kim's. A lot of people like to get their cars worked on. All the neighborhood around the corners, they have enough automotive places to get fixed. They can't find parking. These people that have the restaurants are, on my block, from East Street, from D Street to all the way to F Street, it's all downtown or all blocked. We don't have no parking, and that's what they complain about. I've been told that they're going to have some meetings coming up. I would like to be informed to see when those meetings are coming up, so I can speak. I have videos, I have hundreds of pictures and stuff like that on it. From 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, there's nobody. I go home at 5:00 PM, there's nobody. I come in at 9:00 in the morning, there's nobody. It's starting to get cold now, it's going to be, and people are going to be inside. What about the outside? Nobody's going to be outside. I wish we could talk about it, give me some more time, so I can, because I have tons of pictures. You know, you folks are all nice and groomed and haircuts, you know? And I hope you guys come into my shop, sit there, and I'll bring donuts if you want, just so you can sit there and look at all the people that are complaining about the parking. Thank you.
Didn't know I could do this. Okay, so my name is Scott Campbell, and I live in Encinitas District 1. And I'm also public spokesperson for Encinitas System Review Panel. First thing, I request the council to provide a report on the status of the 100 municipal violations that we heard about earlier, maybe next week or in a couple of weeks, that's fine. I have a quick comment about the streets, the street cleaning. There's going to be cleaning up the trees and stuff. It's going to be blowers or vacuum. But we have a presentation. And at my house, I've gotten all this literature from the state. And I asked the council to make a resolution, a proclamation about voting no on Proposition 50. Back in 2022, actually like three years ago, this council supported abortion. And there was 78 people that showed up against it, and two people have supported it, and yet they voted 5-0. So there is precedent for the council to do this kind of stuff and make proclamations on state initiatives. So I actually made a sample for you to help this process, and maybe you can even vote on this today. Basically, the state, actually not the state, I don't care about the state. Three of the people in this council ran on local control, and the state is trying to take this away. And I ask the council to assert local control and not allow the state to stomp on us so easily. I have this ballot here. It's really easy to do. You can just add a few names, assign it, and you can do this next week. You could probably do this tonight. And I'm going to keep under two minutes. Thank you.
Following Melissa is Lucy Solomon, Richard Solomon, and then Beth Whitaker.
Good evening. First, on behalf of Safe Streets Encinitas, we want to thank the city for generously carving out time to build a relationship with our group. We have been welcomed by many of you, including city staff, council members, and the sheriff department. Captain Watts, we appreciate your commitment. This evening, I want to share information about the first Safe Streets Encinitas community event taking place at the Encinitas Community Park from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. This will be a chance to connect with neighbors, share ideas, and learn about local safety efforts that can save lives. We have speakers, a silent auction, Emery gear created by 101 Republic available to order, and of course, kids are welcome. A final thank you to Councilman Schaefer, sorry, Councilman Marco San Antonio for creating banners for our event. We hope to see you there.
I'm not Lucy Solomon, I'm Richard Solomon. My wife had to go home. I'm here because in an article that was in the San Diego paper, keeping the lights on for the La Paloma. And I really want to throw my weight into supporting this. I've lived here for 40 years. The La Paloma is the heart and soul of downtown Encinitas. It's been our date night for 40 years, dinner and a movie. It's been great. I saw Leon Russell there. I saw George Winston there. I saw the Miami Sound Machine there. Bill Murray's been there. It's just a very important part of Encinitas, and I can give a little story. Before moving here, I lived in Manhattan Beach. Manhattan Beach had its own La Paloma, the Lamar, a theater in downtown Manhattan Beach that was just like the La Paloma. It's gone. It's been gone now for over 30 years. It's a commercial building. Now it's actually owned by Skechers. Skechers owns all of downtown Manhattan Beach now. It's just, La Paloma is just so important. I mean, we have poetry slams there. We've got faith-based programs there. We've got children's programs, surfing movies. I mean, this is a surfing community. They have major surfing premieres at the La Paloma. The city needs to support it. I'd like to see a commission started by the city for the renovation improvement of La Paloma. I had no idea it was owned by Allen. I thought it was owned by a Chinese company, and it was somebody outside the city. And I just think it's just a very important part of Encinitas, is who we are and what people know about. It's been there since 1936, '38. It's, come on, we can't lose it. It's just got to be improved. It's got to be made even better than it is. Thank you.
I can't respond, I can't respond other than say it was 1928, so in two years, it's the 100th anniversary. There is a group. Contact me, and we'll get you involved.
Thank you.
Beth Whitaker. Beth will be followed by Jeremy Ross, Diana Cutlow, and then Elena Thompson.
Hello. I have two things to talk about. I might only get to one, but if I don't get to the second, I know someone else will. So I live right next to here, and I want to talk about Quiet Zone because there's funding opportunity that we would need to move on very quickly. And I hope I get this right. So the Federal Railroad Administration's National Railroad Partnership, the NRPP, is now open. This program prioritizes grade-crossing safety projects and has a deadline of January 7th. The city's already identified approximately 13.4 million in required Quiet Zone safety upgrades at D Street and East Street and Lucadia Boulevard. And this is exactly the type of project that the NRPP is designed to fund. We request, along with all of the other 100 people that live right there and many others that have trouble sleeping through the train. I love it here. I can see the ocean, but I also can hear the train. Like, and we have to, it's quite disruptive, but I still absolutely love it here, even if this doesn't happen. But I very much want it to happen. Please direct staff to submit the NRPP application for Encinitas Quiet Zone improvements. Pursue the FRA Railroad Crossing Elimination Program in parallel to fund any remaining planning environmental review or design work, and coordinate immediately with CPUC, Caltrans, and SCTD so that the application is complete and competitive. Please don't miss this chance to move this project forward that has been a long time coming. And I will just say that I am horrified yet again by the ICE raids picking up hard-working neighbors in a brutal and inhumane way. Nothing ever happens to the very wealthy, privileged people who hire, who don't want to pay fair wages, who don't want to pay union workers, so they hire people who are at risk. The system is built to have these people in our community, and they are peaceful. These are our neighbors. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think staff may have a comment.
Just to let the public know, item 10B on next week's agenda is to talk about rail projects for funding, for council to consider.
Good evening. Would like to share a couple of videos from Encinitas, California, today, Wednesday, October 15th, 2025. It's okay to turn the music off. This was right off of Encinitas Boulevard. If everyone could please watch it. The next one has sound. You're looking at a masked gunman with a stun gun and one of our neighbors. Next one, please. Sound on this, please. This is just outside that community. Right on Encinitas Boulevard. These are masked gunmen running across multiple lanes of traffic in front of our cars, hunting down our neighbors. If anyone in this community is comfortable with these tactics destroying our families, taking parents away from our children, please raise your hand in support. I just asked anyone to, you know, raise their hand if they were supportive of these types of actions in our city.
Enough. Yeah, it was time.
Next speaker is Diana Cutlow, followed by Elena Thompson, and then Gerard Tinksley.
And just a, is it beeping three times like it normally does? Okay. Missed that.
Good evening, Mayor.
Let's be polite to each other. Yeah, let me, order, please.
Thank you, Mayor Lairs, Deputy Mayor Lines, members of the council. I'm Diana Cutlow, representing Senator Blakesby here this evening. First, I'm pleased to announce that the senator was one of only a few senators who were able to secure funds from the state budget for projects in District 38. This year, the senator secured a total of $7 million, including $1,670,000 for the County of San Diego's Homeless Prevention Landlord Assistance Program, which is used here in Encinitas. This program encourages landlords to rent to low-income families, veterans, and people experiencing homelessness by offering financial incentives and support services that promote housing stability and independent living for vulnerable residents. Other projects received rewards in Solana Beach, Oceanside, Mission Viejo, and San Juan Capistrano. And now that the October 12th deadline has passed for the governor to sign bills into law, I can report that five of Senator Blakesby's bills were passed. On housing, Senate SB 92 was signed, closing a loophole so developers cannot use density bonus laws for hotel projects like the Turquoise Tower in Pacific Beach. The density bonus law is intended to provide affordable housing, much-needed affordable housing, and not be exploited to build luxury hotel rooms. Also notably, the senator voted against SB 79, which allows more dense development around heavily-traveled transit stops. Although it passed, it does not look like it will currently apply to Encinitas. The governor signed SB 477, which enables the Civil Rights Department to be more effective in housing discrimination issues. This legislation will strengthen California's civil rights law, which has been a model for the nation. This week, the governor held, the senator held a press conference at Moonlight Beach to mark the signing of SB 403, which will make California's End-of-Life Option Act permanent. I'd like to thank Encinitas staff for being so responsive as we planned that event. And lastly,
Thank you.
Solar tax exclusion bill will help you with taxes on solar. Thank you.
Who's next?
No.
You're good.
And then, one more time, Gerard Tinksley.
Second call.
That does conclude.
So with that, we move on to report from closed session. Is there a comment, or, okay. In closed session, the city council voted 5 to 0 to terminate our city attorney contract with Jones mayor within 45 days and proceed with selecting an interim city attorney. So that is our report out from our closed session. Number seven, we'll move on to changes to agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the posted agenda. And then moving to the consent calendar, let's see, items 8D, 8E, 8F, 8J, 8K, and 8L have been removed from the consent calendar.
Okay.
Items 8E and F were removed by council member O'Hara, and the others were removed by the public.
Okay, and are there any others that anybody wants to pull? So I think we'll look to entertain a motion for 8G, 8H, 8I, and 8M.
And 8A, B, and C.
Oh, and A, B, and C, yeah, sorry.
So moved, approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And call the question. And call the question.
Motion carries unanimously. It takes us to item 8D.
Okay. And was it a member of the public?
8D was the public and council member O'Hara.
Okay. And so do, is the member of the public and/or? Three? Okay. So go forward with a staff report? I assume that's okay? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. My name is Ari Zuhikmat, Associate Traffic Engineer. And this item is regarding the installation of proposed guardrail at North Coast Highway 101 and El Portal Roundabout. So a quick background on this item. So we had a number of collisions following implementation of roundabout, which installed with Streetscape project. So staff reviewed the collision records and conducted a tree evaluation to identify the potential improvements at this location. During the, and the proposed design presented to city council. And in June 2025, city council approved the plans and designs for the installation of bollards, rumble strips, and additional signage, including rectangular rapid flashing beacons at this location. After, so following this approval, a reevaluation of the previously proposed bollards by the appointed city engineer has determined that a more effective solution exists for improving safety at roundabout. And because the bollards could create fixed object hazards for vehicles, so as an alternative, staff proposed the installation of guardrail at this location. And here, in this slide, you can see the collision history. So out of 19, from early 2023 through August 2024, out of 19, 18 was nighttime collision, 12 DUI-related collisions, six speed-related collisions, two hit-and-run, one improper turn, 10 fixed objects, five crossover roundabouts, and four, and includes four injury collisions. In this slide, you can see the project location. So the proposed guardrail will be installed on the southwest corner and northeast corner of the roundabout. Here, in this slide, basically is a mock-up of the proposed guardrail at this location, showing the material and how basically it will look. We have this type of guardrails at the north, about 250 feet north of the intersection. So this is an example of the guardrail that you're proposing. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. And Jim, would you like to go before or after public comments? Okay.
I was just wondering, just for clarification, people, when you say 18 nighttime accidents, were you able to secure the time of day of all those accidents?
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. So from those 19 incidences, 17 were between the hours of 8:00 PM and 5:00 AM, predominantly between about 10:00 PM and 2:00 AM. Two of them of the 19 were between 7:00 PM and 8:00 PM. The majority of those were Friday and Saturday night incidences.
Okay, perfect. That was it. I appreciate you tracking that down for me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll call public.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor Lines, I saw one there and I didn't.
I have a question of clarification, too. We've looked at this a lot of different times and we've talked about it in detail. The prior proposal also had some other improvements, like additional signage and the lit crosswalk. Is this proposal just meant to indicate the substitution of the guardrail for the bollards, but everything else is still?
Yes. The other part is actually the construction is underway and is anticipated to be completed by, within two weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go to public.
So we do have three speakers. Melissa Sharbarth, Elena Thompson, and then Rick Smith.
Hello again. Speaking on behalf of Safe Streets Encinitas, we're focused on ensuring that pedestrian, cyclist, and driver safety are always at the forefront of decision-making in our city. We want the city to address the real issues in Encinitas driving under the influence, distracted driving, and speeding. The guardrails proposed for the 101 roundabout would be paid for out of the safe routes to school budget. We feel that this 60K would be better used in other areas like enforcement, red light cameras, speed cameras, and infrastructure changes. These are mitigations that we feel will truly make Encinitas safer. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Elena Thompson. So I think this is a terrible idea, frankly speaking. I live in Lucadia, and actually, we have been waiting for the Streetscape to be completed now. It's about nine years late in getting finished. And we've been extra anxious to see those guardrails removed as part of the Streetscape. So no one wants guardrails any longer. Those were in vogue back in the 40s when we didn't have the I-5 and people were speeding on the 101, the only northwest highway. So as the last speaker said, and I totally agree with, we need to really address the root causes of the issues that we have. And particularly that 17 of these DUIs are between 8 and 5, 8:00 AM, or excuse me, 8:00 PM and 5:00 AM. The fact is, the root causes are drunk driving. Encinitas has become the PB of North County, and that's a fact and really unfortunate. Cannabis use is a problem with three dispensaries on our Highway 101, distracted driving, people texting, and then speeding. This is what the statistics point to. So to put up ugly guardrails and take away the beauty of our Streetscape is really a bad idea. So I would commend the sheriff team for their stepped-up enforcement and encourage more of that. And send the message that Encinitas is not the place to be drunk because we're going to ticket you and you're going to get thrown out of our town. So let's not resort to this. I think boulders were a better solution, some aesthetic rock design, if anything. Thank you.
Okay.
Smith?
Oh, sorry, there's one more.
And then we do have one speaker, Molly Hentley, in registering opposition to the recommended action, but does not wish to speak.
My name is Rick Smith. I own the property at 396 North Coast Highway 101. I see the pictures of the bollards and everything. So I came down today, and I came down Lucadia Boulevard, turned south on 101. Maybe about halfway down, there's some of the bollards in front of a tree. And then there's maybe one more bollard. Then you get down by the surfboard shop, and there's more bollards there on trees. That's the only thing. When you come down the other way, in front of the panic gun and everything, there's no bollards. So you have 75 to 100 people sitting 20 feet from the streets drinking coffee, and there's no bollards. Okay, I sit there more than anybody in this room every day looking at that. By the time we get the yield of traffic in the circle and everything, I'm all for a more aesthetic pleasing. This is part of the Lucadia entrance. And I said, can you make it look better? And he goes, not really. That's not our job. Our job is engineering, putting something that's safe. Anything aesthetic, that's up to us. We have to put it in. That's not their concern. So hopefully, we can come up with a plan. I know there's some light things, light boxes, that people have put things on, plastics that look pretty. My shop, I have painted on the back the things. There are more murals around. If we can do something with that, that would last. But seeing these rust belts in front of Lucadia Glass, I don't really like. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, really quickly. Mr. Smith, Rick, sorry. You said bollard. Did you mean guardrails?
Well, no, we had talked for a while about doing bollards. And then you were okay to think about putting sleeves Correct. over the bollards. We also talked about using railroad ties. But that was the most expensive option because we had to pour footings. Somewhere around here, they have done that. Delmar, wherever. But that was the most expensive thing. But aesthetically, it was very pleasing. Engineering is going to rule here, so I don't have a lot of choice. I just would like something that's appealing.
Okay.
Certainly. And when you were talking about bollards on the 101, driving down the road, those are bollards specifically? Because there's, we also have pictures of guardrail on some of the locations you mentioned. I just want to make sure we're all talking in the same language.
The only guardrails that I know from Lucadia Boulevard to Encinitas Boulevard is on the east side.
Right.
There's nothing, the panic in all of the restaurants, Lucadia Glass, there's nothing there. My shop does have bollards. There's one in front of the cars that pull in because one car back 40 years ago did go into the building. Then I put more in front of the windows. Then the city put more right at the start of the curve. Maybe four years ago, a car hit it, and he was going fast. It crushed into his, right into the engine. But the bollard just went like this about six inches. So when he's saying we have to have this ugly thing on there, that's extreme. That's extreme, and I understand safety. That's why I'm here pushing for the, when in the circle, yield to the traffic and the rumble strips. So.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you. It's helpful. It's going to be a good discussion.
Okay. That's it? Okay. And so Deputy Mayor Lines, going first.
Dan, would you pull up a visual of what the prior approved bollards solution was? And why, what's the difference in cost between that and the guardrail? Because it appears that we're saying that because we're switching to guardrail, it's going to be $60,000 more. So I want some clarification on that from you, please.
Yeah. I apologize, Deputy Mayor. I do not have an exhibit that shows the previously approved bollards. Now, what I can do is I can try to describe them in my best ability. If you look at the picture, actually, on, I would say the bottom right, you can see bollards that are currently protecting Lucadia Glass. So the previously council-approved direction was to install bollards that would have been very similar in nature to that with an offset of about three feet each, so three foot on center. And those bollards would have a, probably a wooden cover on them to give them a little bit more of an aesthetic look.
Okay, thank you. What about the cost that's being proposed?
So the cost for those four bollards that were installed was roughly $60,000. The cost for what we are estimating for both of the guardrails is roughly $50,000.
So we don't need any extra money. We are just saying that the guardrails are going to be a substitute for the bollards. The $60,000 should have already been in the contract.
Right. We won't need additional dollars. That's correct. And really, the thing that is important here is unfortunately, bollards are considered fixed objects. In the transportation design world, those fixed objects cannot be located within the clear recovery zone of a vehicle. Directly at the curb line is the clear recovery zone. So that is an extremely dangerous location to have fixed objects. We can have them away from the right of way, or I should say the edge-of-travelway where we do, in this picture, at Lucadia Glass. That's okay. But at the curb line is an extremely dangerous location from a health and safety standpoint for vehicles. So.
And I'll just conclude with a comment. I really care about safety for the public, the driving public, the walking public, the biking public. So I, you know, that's, your primary job is to help us with safety. However, the aesthetics are imperative.
Absolutely.
We invest a lot in the aesthetics, especially through this part of the community where we have a lot of really recent improvements. I would really like to lean towards what we're hearing our constituents say, that we want something more aesthetic. And if there's another option for bollards where it would also then address the safety in a way that gets it out of the clear zone, that may be where I will lean. But I'll listen to what my colleagues have to say. Thank you.
So I'll hop in next. The, I'm going to go back a little in time. And there used to be guardrails along parts of 101. They were not rusted. They were not the patina, as it was called. And Jason, if you want to hop in here, you may remember some of these discussions. It was actually a design choice 15, 20 years ago to go to the patinaed, rust-covered replacements there that you see further up on 101. So I don't agree that Streetscape, which started 20 years ago, right? Honestly, it's morphed a little. It didn't start with that to take out the guardrails. It was actually selected to put in the rusty ones for whatever, right or wrong. I wasn't up here, but I'm just saying I was in the meeting room. And so I don't agree that it's necessarily a purpose up here to get rid of them. Dan, I think you hit on the difference between a bollard or a rock. Rock would be the same as putting a bollard right there on the edge, fixed object.
That's exactly.
It does not deflect a car. And I know in the traffic engineer's, Abe's previous testimony for us, his comment was, we need two bollards to stop a car. I can't, one wouldn't do it. They would go through it. And so the purpose of a connected guardrail-type structure is that it deflects them, and it may put damage all over that car, but it puts them back, keeps them in the roadway, so to speak, bumper car, if you will.
That's exact.
And that's really the functional purpose. Whatever structure goes there should be a deflector structure, not a fixed object in, to use the terminology of a traffic engineer. So, yeah. And I actually think it's a better approach. I think for the very reason you just gave. What we're concerned about is people, and on a straightaway, it's much, much less of a problem, which is why you don't see guardrails all along southbound. But where you suddenly put them into a chicaner, or a traffic circle where the car has to negotiate right and then back left, that's where we've seen the traffic history. The accident history shows that we have problems, especially in the northbound. And especially, 3/4 of them, my recollection, are due to drunk driving. And as you heard tonight from Captain Watts, we are absolutely focusing on drunk driving and enforcement. He told you about, that's what we're using the two new traffic enforcement for. So we will do that. It's not even negotiable. But that said, we still want to make the structure safe because whatever we do, whatever this group does up here, we will make it safer. We will not make it less safe. And so I actually support this recommendation. I thought the bollards were a very expensive target object. And every time they get hit, they have to get replaced. This, I think you're going to get more glancing blows and redirections. It'll get a little, the patina will get scraped up, and a car will definitely get scraped up. So I'm supportive of this approach. I'm open to other ideas if they will deflect cars rather than stopping them. But I want to go a step further. And I appreciate the fact that we talked about all the other fixes, the rumble strips, the signage. I wanted to make sure, and I looked at our other traffic circles, to make sure, and I looked at our other traffic circles, in particular, the ones on Lucadia Boulevard. And at each entry, there is a one-way sign and a black and white one-way sign and a black and white Chevron sign. And I think that's part of the reason we've had a huge increase, 1,000%, a three orders of magnitude increase in traffic accident at this intersection since going to the roundabout. If you drive it at night, it's dark, and you don't notice it. You need to go around something. So we need to, just like we did it in Lucadia Boulevard, I think we need to add that signage. I don't know if that's in the current plan. If not, I'd like to add it in tonight's recommendation. So if you'd like to respond.
Yeah, absolutely agreed. And those Chevrons are what we consider a standard, uniform application at these roundabouts. So that would be perfect.
Perfect.
And Mr. Mayor, if you would, I do have another potential suggestion for council to maybe deliberate tonight. We are installing these new traffic enhancements in the next couple of weeks, meaning our additional signage and markings. We can take the next six months, see how these signing, how the signage and markings are being adhered to by drivers, get six months of additional data. We have historic data. And that can give us a pretty good idea if the signage and striping that we are installing in the next couple of weeks are going to do the trick, or whether we really need to go out there with another device to ensure safety for not only Lucadia Glass, but also pedestrians.
Okay. Appreciate that. And I don't believe we currently have, there's an RRFB flashing light system at the crossing there. It's a very popular school crossing. I don't believe we currently have lights down in the street level. And is that something we could add? Do you have an estimate about how much that would cost?
There actually are streetlights. They're pedestrian. I mean, they're technically streetlights and roadway lights, but they're not the Cobra overhead lights. Actually, in the picture, the top left, you can see they're the acorn luminaires. So it is a lit intersection?
No, no, I'm talking about the flashing RRFB.
Oh, yeah, we're installing that as part of our signage.
Yeah. And all the RRFBs I see in our town, and I think most around, just have the two vertical signs and each with lights on it. But there are some options where you can actually put them in the roadway. And I've talked to other mayors, and they're talking about going that way. Because I've noticed, and I've been out in front of SDA where there's an RRFB, and I've seen people almost get, people don't stop. They get past the signage, past the flashing lights, and they just keep going. And if it was in the roadway, a couple, three lights for each crossing.
The in-road lighting.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
That's always a potential.
I would like to know how much that would cost, and whether that's an additional safety enhancement on this very critical route to and from school on a very busy road. So, and I think that would make the RRFB far more safe, even a better enhancement.
We can absolutely come back with a potential cost estimate for that.
Okay. And with that, I will yield to Councilmember O'Hara.
So I want to pause from the subject because there's a lot in this item. The first thing I want to point out is I would like to, in the future, not see items that are voted on by council changed by staff and then put on a consent calendar.
Good point.
I think we need to provide transparency to our residents. This is not something we want to create a precedent of doing. So I think when council makes a decision on something that we all have discussed twice now, it doesn't belong to come back to us on the consent calendar. We owe the public the time for us to have a discussion about it if it's going to come back to us three times. Okay, so I'm going to move on from that. I appreciate you listening, and I know that that's not going to be a problem going forward. We have a couple of issues here. One of them is a DUI issue. I think Melissa spoke to that. And I think the numbers speak to that. Majority of the accidents between 10:00 and 2:00 a.m., 18:00 at nighttime, majority of which are DUI-related. This is not a school hour time issue. This is a DUI issue. I speak for the council. And we are, along with the Sheriff's Department, dedicated to continue to work forward to address that issue in the city in multiple ways, with the help of the city staff. And it is a prong of this specific intersection where these incidences are, I would say, directly related, if that's too strong of a statement, to DUIs. And it falls on us to continue to work. You saw the numbers tonight are improving. Our sheriff is doing a fantastic job, and we're going to continue to do better. We're going to do better next time with the budget around to find more ways to support them and support this community in this issue. I know the city staff and code enforcement are also working on it. But I think that is one of the issues with this intersection specifically. So the intersection itself, again, we voted twice in this intersection. It came back last time we voted for the aesthetics, myself and Council, Deputy Mayor Lyons, I'm sorry, really pushed this subject. And council was, we're grateful that council supported us in that. I still stand by that. Can we bring out the picture of the intersection with the guardrail? If it weren't, there we go. So we had cyclists in here talking about safe spaces. If you're in your bike, and I witnessed this, I was at Panic in with Lou, Lou's recorders the other day. I watched multiple people go through this very intersection just yesterday. And there were issues where cyclists and cars still don't know how to interact, for better, for worse, who's right and who's wrong, doesn't matter. It's how they interact and what actually happens when they put the rubber to the road. When you put this up, what you provide is a space that when these cars and bicycles overlap next to each other, you leave nowhere for a cyclist to go other than to get pinned against that guardrail. And I can't support that for safety purposes. And for aesthetic purposes, I do think our solution last time was good. But I do also think I followed back on previous conversation, which again was with a different engineer, which I very much appreciate you relooking at this. I've since looked up whether we can put boulders there because we were told we couldn't because they would come, they would become flying objects, for lack of a better way to put it, if somebody were to hit them. Yeah. But I've met with other traffic engineers in other cities since then, and who tell me that that is not the case. I'll point at the intersection of Camino del Rio, the roundabout Camino del Rio in San Clemente, several in Newport Beach, San Juan Capistrano also uses rocks in certain places to provide aesthetic safety. And the reason I stand back by this decision, and I want to ask the council to move forward to bring it back to either the original or the previously decided option, or to explore putting rocks, is that would provide spacing between the rocks for someone to bail out should they need to. Majority of these accidents are DUIs. When they deflect, they're probably just going to hit something else. They're going to bounce off the guardrail, and they're going to go across and hit whatever's on the other side of the street. I think we saw that, unfortunately, we saw that at Chautauqua 101. He hit a, we don't have a police report. I'm speculating. But he was on one side of the street. He hit something. He went diagonally the other way across the street. Guardrails are on the whole thing. So where are we going to deflect them to? I think that's an important part of this that we're not looking at. We're looking at what's going to happen, and I'm not going onto that grass. So I'm going to roll back to asking council to keep the decision we made previously, or to consider putting rocks in there because we can't affix those rocks to the ground, correct?
That's correct. Yeah. You cannot affix them. And if they are too large, they would be considered a fixed object because they would not move with collision of a vehicle.
Correct. But we can keep them from flying away if somebody were to hit them.
It's not the concern of a rock flying. The concern would be a car running directly into a boulder, and then it's stopping completely in its tracks and severely injuring.
San Clemente, Newport Beach, and San Juan don't seem to have that concern. So, and I do think to many people's points here, we've spent an exorbitant amount of money on streetscape. And the aesthetic is part of it. So I think we have to do the priority of protecting a building like Lucadia Glass, obviously protecting our pedestrians. But I don't think a guardrail is the way to do it. I'm going to yield the floor for the moment.
Councilmember San Antonio.
Really no right now. I mean, it's, the guardrail, I've heard it several times as well about being pinned against those, that that would be a possibility. So for me, that's kind of a no-go for me. Now you're not looking out for the cyclists. And clearly, 101 is used for quite a bit of cycling, whether you're going north or south. I've used it quite a bit myself back in my heyday. I guess, I mean, I understand that the patina is not likable, but can people paint that to be a mural or, you know, make it pretty? But I do understand that the, I do understand what you're saying, Dan, but I understand we talked about this, and that it is a, you know, all the legal parts of it, that it's in a, you know, not part of the road, but I don't know.
And Councilmember San Antonio, if I could, I know there's been, both yourself and Councilmember O'Hara, you have mentioned the concerns about bicycles being trapped between a vehicle and the guardrail. One thing I did want to mention to you guys, for this particular roundabout, we actually do have bicycle ramps. So if you look at the top-left picture, that ramp is for bicyclists to actually utilize the sidewalk and share the sidewalk with pedestrians. And then they're able to exit. If you look at the bottom-right picture, that ramp exits them back to the bicycle.
It's just tough because the, you know, the spandex crew is not going to be.
To make it clear, because that was something that I didn't make clear to you guys during briefings. So I wanted you to understand that the casual rider is likely to utilize the bike ramp. So that was just one piece of information I wanted you guys to have.
Yeah. And I do understand that a majority of the accidents are in the late, late night, early morning. But it's the tough part. So you're trying to do the best for the city. I'll just, I'll yield for right now.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Yeah, thank you. This is really informative. So thanks, Dan. I'm going to ask a question about safety, and then I'm going to lean in on the aesthetics. So can you remind me what the speed limit is here on this section of the 101?
I believe it's 25 miles an hour.
That's what I thought. So good. I got your support for that. Given the speed, I know, I know the clear zone is a smaller clear zone. So I also believe that a curb changes the need for a broader clear zone. So we've got a curb on one side, and I think that's the side where we have the most concern. I, that's where we were originally showing the bollards. So because we've got 25 miles an hour as our speed limit, if people are going that, and we are going to enforce it then, and we have a curb, correct? Yeah, we do. That kind of lowers my concern for risk here and safety in that I would like to defer back to the bollards that we had for the aesthetic reasons. We really vetted that carefully, and I felt like we got a lot of concurrence that that was the right approach. So it's a little bit of, yeah, we are understanding there may be vehicles that would go off the road, or at least there has been in the past. So the bollard would then stop the car. But it wouldn't do the things that I'm concerned I'm hearing, like trap the bicycles. So I would like to put a motion forward that we go back to our initial approach with the bollards that were approved the last time we heard this, and also look into the pavement lights as recommended by the mayor for cost for addition to the project.
Okay. Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you. Just to go back to the safety, if you look at, if you could pull up the trees down the road, the whatever, 100 years. So the reason that these are here is so you don't hit that tree. If you hit that tree, you deflect away. The whole point of not the bollards, and they can't be right there, is when you hit it, you stop. And so this is not called a purpose. It's called an accident. And so when somebody goes through there and they have an accident, they have to make sure that we're trying to make this as safe as possible, and the deflection as possible. It's supposed to be 25 miles an hour, but we've just shown Captain Watts that not everybody's following the law. And so when that's the case, we have to make sure that an accident, not on purpose, an accident doesn't happen to have a fatality, which we've seen already happen. So I know we want pretty and aesthetic. I don't know if there's anything aesthetically pleasing that we can add to this to make it pretty. And I will say a bike can fall over that, but a car will deflect off that. So I will say that if we're going to be on our bikes, we're going to be doing this situation. I think it's apparent, if you're going to be on your bike, you need to keep your head about you. You should probably not have your earphones in. You probably shouldn't, you should probably be completely aware of what's going on around you, especially in the city right now. That's just where we are. And I wish it was different. It was different. It's not anymore, and there's more people coming in. So it's, we can't do it for everything for all the time. And if you want all of it all the time, we're going to be stuck at home doing nothing like we were in COVID. That's basically where we're going to end up. So from a sheer safety perspective, and that's what Dan is providing here, I can't say enough for what he's bringing back from a safety perspective. And so that, for me, is, I would go with the recommendation because that's what we've been sitting here talking about for the last, you know, for the entire time, since Emory. We're talking about safety. Let's talk, let's talk, let's talk turkey, you know, let's talk the real stuff. And that's what we're here for. If it wants to look pretty, I think there's enough artists here in Encinitas to do something about making it look pretty. We've done it with the Kart of Kuk. Go out there with some crayons and go put, go put some crayons to work, whatever you want. You know what I mean? Crazy crayons, come on out. So the understanding here is, I appreciate what you've done here. I think that you brought back something that is appropriate. And the reason, again, that that rail is there is to protect you from a stopping in spot and dying, period. You put a bollard on the edge, what Dan is trying to tell you, is you hit that, you're dead. A bike hitting, a bike going through that, you need to tense up. If you've ever done extreme sports or anything like that, whenever you're in a spot, you need to, you have your wits about you if you're going to be riding on the road with cars, period. That is the responsibility of every rider, not just the car, the biker, the driver of a vehicle. If you're on a bike on the road, you got to have your wits about you. You can't be on your spandex, talking to your friend, doing your thing, and then all of a sudden hit something, get pinched in, and think that everybody else is to blame but yourself. So I think this is a safety measure, and I appreciate the safety measure. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember O'Hara.
So I would have to disagree. I don't actually think this is safer. That's why I oppose it. So, and I don't think we've seen anything tonight that's proven that it is ultimately a choice of safety. I think the good news is that these are all, these are all safer than what's there right now. And they're all better for Mr. Smith's building. So we're not going to have a negative outcome here. We have more of a difference of opinions. But I'm not going to say that what they're putting in there is safer because I don't believe it is. So I'm going to second Councilmember, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Lyons' motion. I'm going to ask if I can make an amendment to it, if you consider it, letting staff, letting staff compare bollards and rocks. I think they're the same concept. Is that, is that the use of one or the other versus?
They would both be considered fixed objects, so you can use them interchangeably.
So if you'd be willing to consider that, just so staff can have an option to look at, and then we can finalize this. I would second your amendment, your motion, if you'd include that amendment.
I'll accept that.
Good. I second then.
Good. Anything else? If not, I'll hop in. So, yeah, and I, actually, I love, this is a great discussion. And I think we're all headed to safer, no matter what it is. And that's a good thing. I think Councilmember Schaefer hit on, one of the points I kept thinking is that bicycles won't get trapped between these. Bicycle will go over it and actually permanently save them because they will go over the top in all likelihood if they were sharing a lane parallel as they go through. However, the other thing is I look at, and that is a shero in there. First of all, we already said, most of the accidents are at night. And so we're trying to push them back into the, into the travel lane and keep them there. And I don't think that means they cream to the opposite side. I mean, probably usually what I've seen out in traffic is they scrape along the lane. So the bicycles either won't be there because it's nighttime typically, or they'll be in the bypass lane, or they're in a shero where the car, by law, should be following them, and the bicycle has full right to the, to the road. So, you know, I'm open to anything that works. And ultimately, the option that I thought, Dan, you said maybe we could just let it sit. We could, we could come back with a further discussion about bollards versus, versus rocks, and the placement of where legally they can go next to a step curb. By the way, similar discussion to this occurred with the new composite fencing along Rancho. San Faye Road. And we were told that it had to be 18 inches away. Well, I walk that a lot, and where it gets narrow, that sucker's right at the edge of the curb. So, you know, I just, I think I would go one more friendly amendment, which is hold off on the actual installation of the bollards or rocks and come back and bring that decision here. Go forward with the, all the other fixes you're already doing, including the lights, or at least come back with the cost of the lights as the motion is on the table right now, and then we'll get a finalized decision. But I'm open to any one of those three, including waiting. But I do think that, I don't think that the guardrail is a pinning feature. I think it is a careening. It will mess up a car real bad, and they'll get a lesson from that, and it'll scrape up that patina, but it, you know, won't stop it dead in its tracks, which is actually something we're trying to do.
And I would recommend not installing bollards at all if that's going to be the question, whether we do bollards or guardrail, or nothing at all. So I would recommend that we just wait and look at the traffic data and not install the bollards.
And when you said bollards, you mean bollards or rocks, whatever we decide.
Any fixed object I would recommend against.
So I guess I'll offer, if the motion maker and seconder will entertain it, I'd like to put what the engineer just said and add it to a motion as friendly amendment. So basically, wait on the bollards until we get the cost of the lights, until we see how it operates, and then come back to, and get the trade-off of rocks versus bollards, and decide from there.
Could I just repeat the motion that I have?
Well, could I just recommend that that's actually an alternate motion that you made? Because it would...
Okay.
Well, after all the amendments and going back and forth, what I heard was directing staff to compare the use of the previously approved bollards with wood facade sleeves versus the use of rocks. Explore the cost of the in-road lighting, and then hold off on installation until you return to council with the results.
Well, of course, that would be the case, but what I'm hearing our engineer say is that you would not support bollards? So you would just not allow that to move forward?
I will take direction from City Council, absolutely, but I recommend against installing bollards at the edge of pavement and at the face of a curb where we have vehicles that are driving faster than about 10 miles an hour.
So I can make it as an alternate motion? It's everything that the city clerk just, substitute motion, sorry, that the clerk just said? Anybody interested in seconding?
Second.
Okay, so we have a...
And so your new motion is to delay until we get more information on how the intersection is functioning?
Yes, and we get the information on the cost of the lights, and I think maybe the city manager would like to hop in.
I just want to make sure, Dan, because I know that we took this with the cost of the bollards back in June. So it sounds like council is very supportive of in-ground lights because it does help with safety in crossing. So just a thought, if we already have budget allocation and authority, we wouldn't have to come back for the lights again, so we'd have to come back for it. So if there's a way that, depending on whatever motion happens, if we do want to delay or something, what I'd like to try to do is, it sounds like we have authority because we already had money for the bollards, to, as long as the in-ground lighting doesn't go past the budget capacity that you already did, we could at least do that, get that going, and then we could bring it back. So I just didn't want to have to bring two items back to council.
I would argue, I would say just bring them back at the same time, because we don't know the cost of the lights. And if I knew, if I had an idea that they were guaranteed under $50,000 to install in-ground lights with conduit and whatnot...
Dan?
It's going to probably be closer to about that $50,000 range.
Yeah, and, I mean, my preference, I think, just bring it back, and we'll just finish this item up with the whole thing. So we don't have you doing what you're doing today, because you're actually implementing something now, and do yet another interim. If the cost is less than $50,000 and then do another, I'd rather just bring it back. That's my preference, that's my motion.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Do we have to have both? If we do guardrails, is, do you have to have the northbound guardrail as well, or just the southbound?
So, no, we don't have to. So the majority of the collision data is...
Going that way.
...the northeast corner. So that's the intent. You know, we are also trying to protect life and property on the southwest corner for Lucadia Glass. So there is, there are two important locations, but again, no, we don't technically have to, Councilmember San Antonio, but there are benefits on both of them as well.
And this is a great chart showing how many of the northbound are careening over the middle of the, the, actually, across the circle. And that's where the signage that I was recommending, and I think is part of this, is that, I mean, it's kind of your standard approach now. I think that will help immensely to reduce significantly the nighttime people that completely miss, and they're probably going too fast, and they're probably inebriated. But if we can get them to realize, there's something in front of me, and I have to go around, and we've done that at others, and if we, I think we could reduce the total number of accidents here, and reduce the need for the bollards, but, or a guardrail, or rocks, or whatever. But I agree with you.
I got to step in and disagree. Somebody who's had one beer too many is not worried about a sign, and they're not going to change their behavior. They're getting an accident because they're inebriated. The data shows it beyond clearly.
Yeah, and that's where the data would tell also whether we saw the accident rate now drop significantly after putting the sign in there.
When's the last time you heard, oh, thank goodness the sign was there, cut down the DUIs? Like, you just don't hear that. They're not looking for signs.
I think maybe you're, so it's actually an impediment. Think of it as something in the circle, and I'm speaking specifically about the signs we use at, not Hygiea, it's at Hermes, right? Where each entry, and so as you're driving up to it in the dark, you see a white one-way sign and chevrons below it, and you know you have to veer right. And my thought is, what's happening here, what's happening in the northbound with slightly, with inebriated drivers apparently, is that they don't even realize they're coming into a circle, and they're just looking far beyond. But a big white reflective sign would make them realize they have to divert.
Right, Mr. Mayor. I agree that, in conjunction with other measures that we are incorporating as part of these improvements happening in the next couple of weeks, I think will, it will definitely provide that advanced warning. Now, if somebody is so inebriated that they can't see anything in the road, which some of these drivers may be, I mean, that, no sign's going to stop that, but the hope and intent is an individual that may happen upon this roundabout who's not quite ready for the roundabout, these features will help identify early on that the roundabout is coming, and they will be able to hopefully slow and divert in time to navigate it appropriately.
We can, I'm sorry, just gets distracting to have talking. So I don't have anybody else speaking? We have a substitute motion and a second. Is everybody familiar?
I just find it ironic that we put in this beautification, and then we have to put up all these things that unbeautify it, right? It should be inherent, and it should be intuitive if it's done right, but it's just ironic. But I'm ready to go.
Okay, yeah. And if we're ready to vote on first, the substitute motion, and if that fails, we'll go back to the original. Okay? So this is, this one is the, I made it, Luke seconded.
And that's to compare the use of the originally approved bollards with wood facade sleeve versus the use of rocks, and to direct staff to explore the cost of in-road lighting. Was the chevrons included in your motion or no?
I would include the chevron signs, but I think that's something you could do administratively today.
We can do that.
For completeness and openness, I will include that in the motion if, yeah, okay. So yes, it is in the motion.
So then it's to explore cost of in-road lighting and use of chevron signs, and return to council with the results.
Yeah.
So I thought we were already installing the signs, and that was not, the sign's already going in.
Other signs. This is in-the-circle sign only that I'm, several.
Okay. Next time we have this discussion, can we bring in some videos of the crashes that are all online, so we can see what actually happens and vet this discussion clearly? I'm just going to leave it right there, but thank you.
If I could jump in. Kathy, I was a little confused about what you thought versus motion was. Could you read that again, please?
So it was to direct staff to compare the use of the originally approved bollards with wood facade sleeves versus the use of rocks, direct staff to explore the cost of in-road lighting, and use of in-circle chevron signs, and return to council with the results.
Yep.
That was different than I thought. That may not have needed to be a substitute motion.
I think, I'm confused, because I think it's the same as what your motion...
Doesn't matter, we got the same place.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Is it working? Oh, there you go. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. So with that, we don't need to go back to the other?
No.
It is 8:39. Let's take a, I'm going to say 10-minute, but I know it's going to be 15-minute break. Is that okay? Now, it's been two and a half hours, so I could use a biological break, so, yeah. So we'll be back at, in 15 minutes. Watch the timer, no less, no more, I mean, sorry. So we'll be back at...in 15 minutes. Watch the timer. No less. No more, I mean. Sorry.
Item is to approve funding for the La Costa Ped Path project. The path project goes on La Costa Avenue from Vulcan Avenue roughly to Interstate 5. And we just heard recently that Sandag is preparing to give the city a grant, which we applied for back in March. And this action right now, sorry about that. Here's a picture. This action right now will move money into the project so we can have the grant local match there. We can have the design, finish up the design, and we can be ready to build this thing with the grant funding.
Perfect. I guess it's me. I pulled this. Absolutely motion to approve. I just wanted to point this out to the public, get an idea of the scope of this project, what we're doing, and how big a deal this grant is. Really excited to see it move forward. And I want to give an attaboy to the engineering department for getting this grant. This is massive. And I don't, I don't want to miss the opportunity, as does the rest of the council, to tell you guys how much we appreciate you getting this, this grant taken care of for us. So, thank you. That's my motion. My motion approved.
Okay. I will second that, unless, unless Schaefer would like to. I had a couple comments, but I'll put them after, I'll give them after public.
Who was the second?
I think I was.
Three of you, so.
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
You can have a third, too.
It's Marco.
Yeah, okay. You can make it Marco. I'm okay with that. So, public?
Yes, we have three speakers. Zach Lee, Elena Thompson, Scott Campbell, and then Molly Hintley in registering support, but does not wish to speak.
Zach had the lead.
Okay. So then it is Elena, and then Scott Campbell.
Okay. Great motion. Thank you so much. I live in northwest Lucadia for almost 40 years. And La Costa Avenue, where you've just approved the DG Ped Path, is such an important project for our community, largely because we're the only east-west roadway to the beach and to the Highway 101 that does not have a sidewalk. No sidewalk and no ped path. So what we've got is a painted stripe where people like myself, we have to walk to the beach in the roadway. So check that out on your next drive. And it's very dangerous. People are pushing strollers with babies. So it's really a horrible situation. So the sooner we can get this in, staff, Matt, the better, without obstacles. And I want to just point out, too, that the other reason it's so important is when the city, well, the transit group double-tracked the rail corridor, that impeded our ability to walk to the beach as well, or out to downtown, because we have to now climb over two-wire fences. So basically, our property values have been, you know, shot because of this. We haven't been able to walk, and we can't meet the greenhouse climate goals of the city. So thank you for voting in favor of the Ped Path. Good move. Woo!
Okay. And I have, oh, sorry. It's just two.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo the previous speaker's comments. I've lived up the street 20, for 20 years. I can walk on this. I will be walking on this. I would like to thank the council for selecting this project in the first place over some of the other competing ones, and this won the grant process. That's, it's amazing. Nobody thought we could do it, and we did. And I don't know, nobody's really brought this up, but if you go from the freeway and on this path, and then you turn left on Vulcan and go all the way to the Katy Bober, that's almost three miles of contiguous walking trail. That's, that's a huge benefit for the city. That's a huge improvement. And once again, thank you, council.
Great. That's it, right? Okay. A couple of comments, and I think I walked this entire path down one side, up the other with former Mayor Krantz when he was mayor, and ran into Scott Campbell while we were doing it and had a long discussion out there. This is, what, a year and a half ago, two years? But it's in the report, but I'm not sure it's real clear. At the Sandag Regional Planning, Planning Group, this was considered, needed to be approved there, and then it'll, it'll go for approval at the, at the Board of Directors. And there was actually an error in the calculations. So it did, it got pulled. And luckily, the city manager checked, and this is still approved, right, technically?
Yes, Dan. We went ahead and had engineering staff check and got confirmation that this would be moving forward.
But it still hasn't gone through the full approval. So it's going up through the stack. So we approved it. We're now approving matching for it, but Sandag needs to finish the approval. But I wanted to build on what, what Scott Campbell talked about. This got a score of 78.2, and it's a total score type thing. The highest score was 92. The lowest score was 69. There were winning, partially, fully funded, winning scores at 75. So we were three points above it. The Trail 82 was only one point behind this one. So both, both projects scored well. One of the errors that I found in, in there will add to the Trail 82 score. I don't know if that'll push it over a threshold. We'll see where it goes in coming up. But it's interesting how viable this one was, that it got selected, and it was well above the threshold of being funded, fully funded. And who knows? Maybe, you know, maybe there's good news in the future for Trail, Trail 82. If not, it tells me we just keep putting in for these kind of things. So with that, we'll call the question. Cool. And who polled 8F?
Councilman Roderick.
Okay. Do you need a staff report?
Just for the public, this is a memorandum of understanding between the City Events to Need Us and NCS Environment Day for a community special event at NCS Community Park. I would like to send this back to staff for a more thorough report. Items I see on here for a free event involve fundraising, which I don't see who will be recipient of fundraising explained. I don't see what monies are expected to be utilized. And some of the fees that we're paying, I assume, even though we're working with a nonprofit, somebody's making that money. And to be honest, I'm not sure why we can't do this ourselves. It's a single-day event pass at a park, planning an expo, one person of staff, max usage, providing spaces, entertainments, and then, and then committing to motion and activate volunteers, who are all very motivated. So I, I'd like to see the money. So I'm asking council to send this back for a better explanation of where the money goes in this. So there's, there are a number of items on here that will be collecting money. So where is that going? Because it's touted as a free event. And then why do we need a partner that we, and why can't we do this ourselves? Eco Fest started as a city event, as I understand, a community event. And we have a very great staff as far as climate action, environment. We have a more than active community that would love to support an event like this. So I'd like to, at this time, I'm not saying I want to vote to do it or not do it. That's not what I'm saying. I'd like a more robust, explained, explanation of the monies and why we need MLU with, with NCS Environment Day, E-Day. And if we are getting, if we are feeling we need a partnership, who did, who else did we look at for this partnership? I don't think this is a complete report. And so I'd like a complete report.
And I'll hop in next. I would like, I would put it off, too. I have one more thing to add, if you'll entertain it, or I'll make a motion to this effect. We have two events, very similar, both held at the, at the park. The other one is, and I'm trying to remember the name, but there, we have vendors there, and when I go there, it's, it's staffed by all of our staff for two, both events. And I'd like to see them combined, where you get the, the bigger crowd for the two and have all the vendors there for both, you know, for the, for the one combined one. It'll be a cost savings. It's less impact to the use of the park. And so I would make a motion to push this off, have staff go investigate the costs and the, and the funding, where it's going, get a fuller report. But number two, also look at combining those two events at a minimum. And if I could do it, and I'll just throw it out there tonight, I'd love to see Cyclovia moved into that same realm, because they're all about environment in so many places. Maybe we hold it down at 101 with Cyclovia. I don't know. But I, my motion, I'll start my motion just with the two and leave it at that for now. But I'm trying to make things more efficient and like-minded, like-themed events, try and combine them. So you'll second the motion?
Yeah.
Perfect. Anyone else?
Yes.
Okay. Deputy Mayor lines.
So I'd like to hear from staff. Is there some confusion here between Eco Fest and Eco Day? Or, or, I mean, can you clarify that?
I think the mayor's referring to the Sustainable Solutions Fair. Is that the one you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think so. I forget the name.
Yeah. Yeah, that is the other sustainability-related fair that's, that's put on. And that one's more oriented towards specifically zero waste and supports the recycling and organics diversion and education about that. And that, for that, we contract with I Love a Clean San Diego to support the implementation of that event.
Yeah. And my question, my action, my motion, is can we find a way to combine the events so that we don't have to pull the staff, so many staff members out there and have them? Because they really are complementary, like-minded events, and it was actually a little lighter attended than what I had hoped out there at the park. And I think it just, less impact to the park, less impact to, and, but we get, hopefully, complementary groups come together, and you get a bigger overall group for both events, but all at one event. So I think what I'm looking for is basically table this for tonight and then come back with investigating that option and responding to the comments from Councilmember O'Hara.
I think there's a lot, I think I still have the floor, but I think there's a lot of details to what's being asked here. So those two separate events have two separate objectives. And it's fair to say, yeah, let's look at that. But I don't know that we know the answer, that they could or should be combined until we look at what the objectives of each of them are. I know that the Eco Fest relies on, it always has been driven by the public, by the nonprofit associated with it. And it, it's broader and bigger in its performance and its music, and it's, it's, I can't speak entirely for it, but from what I know about it, it is a broader objective and vision than the Sustainability Fair. But if those two fit together nicely, there's probably an opportunity there. I just wouldn't want to damage the integrity of either of those events. It could be just that more information is needed in order to make that decision. So I hope you find that to be a fair comment.
Yeah. And I think that fits within what we're asking, so, or what I'm asking.
Yeah. I mean, this did start off as a city event, from what I know.
That's actually incorrect, if I could clarify. It's always been a, run by the nonprofit with city sponsorship.
It was Bob Nanega, is how I recall it, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
So I guess, and I still come back to, I, I'd like to see the numbers on the, on the dollars and cents and where they're all going and what's happening with that, just because I don't want to find out after the fact that it wasn't something we would have voted on. And I, and I do go back to, I think the city should be able to do an event like this by itself. I don't, I don't, this is, this is a, in the event space, this is a very simple event to put on as far as the standards of what we're doing and the permitting of it. So I think we should explore doing it. I know that we are, our 101s in our chambers seem to be able to put on events of this scope without partnering with, with larger companies. And so I'm not sure why the city needs to partner with a nonprofit. We have more resources than all four of our chambers in 101s. So I'd like to explore that, too.
So I, oh.
So Deputy Mayor lines. Sorry.
I just want to weigh in on, I know you have a lot of experience with events. I have a lot of experience with events as well, having worked on the Cyclovia Open Street event when I was on the Environmental Commission. I do know that it's expensive for the city to hold events, so this is a way for the city to be involved. But the heavy lifting on the event is, is the responsibility of the nonprofit. So it's a, it's a way for the city to be associated with something that's actually bigger than what the city can handle financially. So there may be some benefits to the city playing a small role here with giving some money to help support this event, but really getting a bigger amount of volunteers and a, and a bigger amount of fundraising that the nonprofit brings forward. If the city handled the whole event, it, it would be more expensive for the city to do that. I'll yield.
What are they fundraising for?
I'm not on the board of this event, so I don't have an answer.
And that's what's missing in this report.
And what I would say is, that's the purpose for bringing that back. And we'll have that discussion at a future date. So I think we've got a motion and a second. I'd call the question if I don't, I don't see anybody else. So let's call the question.
And I just want to make sure that's, that's to send back to staff for a more complete report to include the exploration and explanation of costs, funding, where money goes, and the possibility of combining with other like-minded city events.
Yeah. In particular, the, the Eco Solutions Fair. What's it called, Crystal?
The Sustainability Solutions Fair.
Sustainable. And my vision is to have it as kind of a subset venue within it, you know, and it, it's mostly vendors and, and so, but I'm looking for good ideas on how to get more efficient and, and bigger crowds, quite frankly. So.
That's all you have?
Yep. So we have a motion and a second?
And motion carries with Deputy Mayor lines voting no.
With that, we move on to item 8J, which is, yep.
And that is members of the public, and there are several. There's nine.
Nine. So this is authorization to enter into a master lease agreement for a small wireless facility attachment installation with ubiquia incorporated. Contact person is Senior Management Analyst Elmore. So we'll have a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. My name is Jared Elmore. I'm Senior Management Analyst with the Public Works Department, and I'm bringing this item to you this evening. There's a brief history of the negotiation that went on to bring us to this point. But essentially, we've got a firm that approached the city wanting to install some devices on city-owned electrified light poles, use the electricity coming through those poles to power their devices and create a wireless communication network throughout the city. So we went through a process of negotiation to reach terms, modified the template agreements that were in existence slightly, and presented that in completed format to you today. And I can take any questions you have.
I've got some, we're already to baseline questions, so questions of clarification?
Yes, sir.
Next G. What is the status for Next G, the, the previous small wireless carrier in the city? Are they still active?
I believe they are. I haven't checked into that.
Okay. So, and do we know how many current poles they have up and, and active?
I don't. The item that I presented in the agenda report is complete. It's the agreement with all of the subsequent amendments and the individual requests for permits for mounting. So if you were to go through there, you could tabulate it manually that way, but I don't have a number off the top.
Okay. In that case, it said 13. The original agreement from 2006 said 13 poles. So I'm assuming we're talking something similar here.
Um.
And I don't know, but I'm asking.
Yeah. I am not an expert in the technology that this firm is bringing to our community, but the conversations that I've had with them lead me to believe that it would be more than that number. They describe the technology as being smaller, drawing lower power, creating a, a less robust signal, and requiring more devices to fill out the network. So you're probably talking about significantly more than 13, but I could not put a firm number on it for you.
Okay. And, and they are fed from fiber cables coming up to the pole?
They're powered from the pole. So rather than installing a separate electric meter, they're tapping the power that comes to the city light pole. It's mounted on top of the Cobra head and attached to the pole that, the arcing pole that extends to the vertical.
How does it get its data signal? I assume it's a fiber in the pavement.
Again, I'm not an expert in this, but what I gleaned from the information they provided is that there are points at which the network ties into fiber optics, but it's not at every single location. So they would relay the signal through the, the individual antenna, is my understanding, until it got to a point where the fiber optic was available.
Okay. So some poles will have pavement dug up with a little slit and have to get it repatched to put in. I'm gonna guess. It has, I mean, I'm, I'm a telecommunications engineer background, so.
I would defer to you.
And now I'm gonna do a little, little, go back with Ricochet. Do you remember Ricochet? Anybody remember Ricochet Wireless? Went bankrupt in 2011. We used to have, and I, I haven't seen one recently, but for about 10 years after that, probably till the early, till a year or two ago, we would have, on our light poles, we would have a little thing hanging down about that big with a little wire antenna hanging down below it. And they were sitting there many years, if not a full decade, after the thing went, went bankrupt. One of the things I'm looking for is bonding to require, to fund removal if they cease to exist, because what seems to happen in, especially in the wireless arena, is companies go away, and then they don't, they don't clean up after themselves very well. So, but, so those, those are my initial questions. Anybody else? Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah. So for this, is, is this something that we already got a contract with them? We don't have a contract with them, yes?
No, sir. We do not have a contract with this.
We are not required to have a contract with them.
Strictly speaking, I don't believe we are. I, you know, I would defer to your counsel for that, but I don't believe we are.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I'm reading page 88 of the report, or if you want to pull that up for Warren the Wizard.
So it'd be 88 on the agenda. All right. I think we're on the same page now.
Yeah. So we're going through the admissions portion, and this is, this is the admissions section. Up there in paragraph one, there's a footnote at the, at number one, about, was it 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 lines down, just past limitations.
Yes, sir.
Number 1. Scroll down to the bottom. 1. Local zoning regulations cannot prohibit or effectively prohibit personal wireless services unreasonably discriminate among functionally equivalent services or regulate based on environmental impacts from frequent, radio frequency emissions. In addition to local decisions, must be made within a reasonable time, and any denial requires a written decision based on supplemental evidence in the written record. So then I scroll back down to 89, and you go to section C, the paragraph C there.
I'm sorry. You said section 9, paragraph C?
No, 89.
89, paragraph C.
You're there.
Yes, sir.
And if you, you take the mouse over to the right side of the page where it says peer, right?
Right there.
So it's talking about the FCC and some of the, the radio frequency requirements and what it can do. We cannot deny this. It sounds a lot like what's going on with the state with our housing right now. They're requiring a lot of things and not really. And then it says, peer-reviewed studies have reported biological damage, including, but not limited to, genotoxicity, carcinogenicity, neurotoxicity in humans and animals, brain and heart cancer, autoimmune disease, DNA damage, mitochondrial damage, brain damage, right? Breakdown of the brains, protective brain barrier, right? These, these are, these are words, infertility and insomnia in levels below the FCC's limits. That's, that's very, very interesting, that they, that this is in the middle of a report that's got a tiny footnote and page 89, section C, that's what's coming up. And this is, this is kind of in the direction of kind of where Mrs. Stottleman was going earlier with regards to some of the things I personally think so. I appreciate you guys bringing this to me, and I think you heard me say this yesterday in the, the staff report, staff briefing report. I am not, personally, I'm not for this. And I know that's not where we are right now, but I, I am not for this type of stuff coming into our town. That's kind of like you said, they're just gonna leave it behind. It's, it's in place. I know 5G is kind of going far and wide right now, but I think people are starting to wake up to it, just like a lot of other things going on in our nation and in this world as a, as a whole. So I'll leave it there.
Okay. Councilmember San Antonio.
I think we talked about it yesterday. I just want to, just, I guess for the public, how many of these antennas are gonna go around, are expected to be going around?
It's an open question. It depends upon the demand that they receive from people who want to utilize them. So if you were to think about the, the number of these that would be required as opposed to the other devices that are already in the community, my best guess, based on what I saw, is that you're looking in the area of a couple hundred citywide. Part of the agreement notes the number of poles that are available, and that's upwards of 1,000.
Page 82 has a description of some of the proposed streetlights. It's a picture on page 82 here that we give, some kind of, just an illustration of how they'll, you know, probably be dispersed throughout town.
No, actually, I think that is the Next G map.
Yes, sir.
That's the one I was citing when I said 13. So this is, in this section, page 82, you, what you were reading about the Telecommunication Act of 1996 was absolutely accurate, especially back in 2006. And I will ask our city attorney to opine if there are any updates and case law changes, because that would have been something written in 2006. And I, I don't know if anything has changed since I got off Planning Commission, but on Planning Commission, we did a lot of cell towers, and we fought quite a few cell towers, not 5G per se, but all of them. And, yeah. So I don't know if this, would this be a good time to, are you done, Councilmember? I mean, okay. And so we'll, we'll go to Tarquin, any comments or anything you'd like to add to the conversation about Telecommunication Act 1996 and any case law since then?
I'm not aware of, you know, substantive, substantive changes in case law that would apply here. I know that 42 USC 332, C7, the FCC, the FCC regulations and federal code continues to prohibit the city from, or local jurisdictions, from regulating the frequencies.
So, so we can't deny what, what the act said is that health cannot be a grounds for a local entity to deny fundamentally?
Correct.
Okay. And that's consistent with what's happened at our Planning Commission and appeals to prior city councils?
Correct.
So, okay. So Councilmember O'Hara?
Think I'm sort of asking the same question, but just to be clear. Under the recommended action, are we voting on the contract? Or are we voting on the concept?
That's a good question. I think we're voting on the license.
The recommended action is in two parts. One is a resolution to update essentially the fee structure associated with these devices. These devices are different, and the network technology is different, and so the fee structure reflects that difference. And also establishes a reasonable cost basis for the fees that are proposed that we've come to terms with the vendor on. So that's the resolution, and it updates council's prior action, which was to set the amount at $270. My understanding is that's what FCC, who said was the no questions asked amount that an entity like us could charge a, a firm coming in to attach these to a pole. But they did not set a ceiling so far as there was a reasonable cost basis, and both parties were in agreement about that. So that's the first part of the recommended action. The second is for the master license agreement that agrees upon the terms generally for these. There is a subsequent step to this that is not in the recommended action today, but would play out over time based upon the master license agreement. And those are pole license applications. And so every time they would like to come in and attach one to a pole, the city would have to review that and, and approve it, and then it would be fair game for the vendor to go ahead and attach that. So it's a one-by-one process after, if council chose to adopt the recommend, recommended actions this evening, afterward, there would be this one-pull-at-a-time process that would play out administratively through the city.
So I guess what I'm missing in, in my question is, if we voted no on So I guess what I'm missing in my question is, if we voted no on this, what would the result be?
The immediate result would be that there would be no change to the status quo. I don't know what the, our counterparties' action would be after that. It's my understanding that they could pursue other ways to introduce the devices in the community. I don't have a total grasp of that. Again, I'm not an expert in this area, but I have been counseled that it's possible for them to pull permits and drop their own poles. So we're balancing an aesthetic impact against the likelihood that they might actually do that or not. We don't know. It's kind of up in the air, and there are definitely smarter people than me who might be able to answer that better, but that's how I understand the landscape of that dynamic.
Okay, and is there a, was there a need identified to bring this in, or was there, their service expanding in our area?
We were approached by, by the company, by Ubiquia, with the request to move forward on this. And part of that request was to make a special allowance for the specific type of architecture of their network, which requires more devices, and that's why there was negotiation over fee, because of the number versus the price per, right? So that took quite a while to work through.
Thank you, I appreciate you clarifying that. It's really helpful moving forward. I know we're going to have a lot of public comment, so I just wanted to have that groundwork set.
And so, how many do we have?
We have nine right now.
Okay, let's, let's take the public comment right now.
First speaker is Patty.
Can I ask a quick question? Do we have anybody here from Ubiquia? I mean.
They did not choose to attend, to the best of my knowledge. I don't recognize any of their staff in the audience.
That's unique. That's very unique.
Okay, first three speakers. First speaker is Patty Stottlemyre with a time donation from Mark Stottlemyre, who is present, then Carol Donahue, and then Joni Mickelson.
Mayor, council members, Patty Stottlemyre, and, oh, about the FCC, you know what? I just read something with the government shutdown, that the FCC is shut down also. Okay, so here we have Ubiquia's small cell 5G, and their tagline for their sales pitch, almost invisible. Nobody's going to know that you snuck that on the lamp post, or the lamp, or the light, So the ask is for the master licensing agreement with Ubiquia for 5G small cell wireless to streetlights, no, oppose. I'm asking that you put the welfare of the Encinitas residents before money, financial interests. Number one, we already have wireless, adequate wireless coverage. I mean, can Ubiquia actually prove that we have gaps in coverage? Two, we don't need any more antennas. Three, we don't want a video surveillance infrastructure. Four, we don't want more white microwave radiation in our neighborhoods and schools. We don't want a metro Encinitas, like they advertise on Ubiquia. We don't want a metro Encinitas smart city with 5G on streetlights. On page 89, thank you, Councilman Schaefer, for already reading that, it says right in there, "The city is nevertheless aware of an increasing body of scientific research documenting biological and environmental damage from RF radiation at levels below FCC limits." And the FCC limits are like 1,000 compared to like Europe, they're like 2. So the FCC says we can just heat up, and it'll be okay. So the, in that, page 89, it says, "Peer-reviewed studies have reported biological damage, including but not limited to genotoxicity, carcinogenicity." Councilman Schaefer, can you help me out? Neurotoxicity in humans and animals, brain and heart cancer, autoimmune, DNA damage, mitochondrial damage, brain damage, breakdown of the brain's protective blood-brain barrier. By the way, children are much more susceptible to do that, to that. Infertility, insomnia at levels below FCC limits. So the city says they have growing concerns that the RF standards set by the FCC may not be adequately protect public health and safety. This is all on page 89 of that agreement, everybody can read. So it's part of the amended city council policies, C. 035, of the 2020-38 resolution. So the staff and you, the council, know this. Thus, I ask you prioritize the well-being of Encinitas residents and visitors and all living creatures and matter over money, i.e. financial contract with Ubiquia and their 5G infrastructure, complete with their surveillance technology with cameras and data mining, by voting no on this agenda. And the document states that the city owns 1,800 streetlights in Encinitas, along with 1,200 or more owned by HDG&E. Wow, this could be the cash cow for Ubiquia. And the map on page 82 shows the first ones to be placed are in the least preferred locations, residential, schools, sports park, nature preserves, all locations where children spend most of their days and nights. Again, I ask that you put the well-being of residents and visitors over money and vote no on this agenda, H.J. Thank you.
Following Carol is Joanne Mickelson, Sylvia Tillman, and then Lindsey Richards.
Good evening, council and mayor. I request that you vote no on this agenda, and what struck me is that it's an agreement with corporation Ubiquia that specializes in smart city infrastructure, including small cell antennas.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, should I begin again? Anyhow, it specializes in smart cell infrastructure, including small cell antennas, attachments, and video surveillance. So that means we're going to have a lot more EMF, RF radiation from city lights, surveillance, smart cities, heaven help us. I'm going to read from something I wrote back in August 21 of 2019, here before a different council, and as you know, we were successful in getting, I think, 17 of 23 asks from that council, and it passed. "I speak tonight as a citizen of Encinitas who has been and is adversely affected by cell tower and antenna radiations to an unimaginable degree. Just as pain is difficult for anyone to describe, no matter what is causing it, so are the burning sensations, weakening conditions in the human body created by these intense and intensifying radiations. Such effects can manifest variously as migraines, mental deterioration, disorientation, memory loss, heart conditions, moderate to excruciating pain or discomfort, limiting ability to perform, and even dreaded cancer." And I think we've mentioned what it can do passing the blood-brain barrier. Speaking of sleeping, I never get through a night. Granted, most people do not experience radiation to this degree, at least not right away, nor are most conscious or aware of it, but from my experience, I know it is happening little by little for all of us. Just as Rachel Carson's book Silent Spring warned the world of the disruptive and destructive effects of environmental pollution, so now we can become aware of and warned of the intense powerful 5G radiation's potential and actual serious, excuse the word, health hazards to human beings, to the good earth that nourishes us, and to every entity.
Thank you.
Oh, no.
Yeah, time flies.
I have more. I hope that we can continue this, because most of us didn't even know about it till a week ago.
Thank you.
So it'd be nice if the public can be warned.
Sylvia here? Okay, how about Lindsey Richards? Okay. Michael Schwab, and his time donation from Betty Pope. Betty, are you here? Is that Betty? Okay. And then followed by Rachel Soares, and then Richard Van Every.
My name is Michael Schwabe.
Yeah, Michael, if you could move over to the microphone.
If I do this.
Or vice versa, yeah.
My name is Michael Schwabe, and I live in Lucadia, about a block south of La Costa Nursery as the crow flies. I've been there for a long time. I want to thank the council for their service tonight, in all the ways that they serve. And I want to thank Luke Schaefer for reading section 2.0C regarding how microwave affects us, and also for Patty. That was part of my presentation. My ask is this: first, on the cost for the, for using the antennas, I'm all for that. And you might also consider a yearly adjustment fee due to inflation, if it's not already there. Secondly, I'd like you to oppose and vote no on this contract. And then if you're inclined in any way to vote yes, I want you to table the motion for now and set up a city workshop, town hall meeting, where this can be discussed, and its broader implications can be discussed. I don't know if you've been to the Ubiquia website, but this is smart city in all the ways. Smart cities have a high density of radiation to support all of the devices and the conveniences associated with a smart city. None of this is about the quality of life. In other words, the support of this organism and the sustaining of life. Microwaves at all levels have some effect. In the U.S., it's 1,000 microwatts per centimeter squared, and this is based on food-trained animal studies, where rats were radiated, and at the level that they would no longer eat, they were weighed and their temperature was measured with an anal probe, and their dose was determined. And from that, we have the 1,000 microwatts per centimeter squared. It's a thermal limit. The Russian limit is 1% of the U.S. limit. It's based on immunological studies of rabbits. How could anything so convenient be harmful to us? I mean, the government, the government would protect us, the government would warn us. I hear this from everyone. If we look at the proposal, in the whereas, there are some statements that imply that there's a shortfall of wireless coverage in Encinitas. I don't believe this is true. I've never heard of anyone complain of any shortfall. If there was a shortfall anywhere, a telecom company that was affected would have submitted an antenna application to make that right for their service. I don't think we need any more antennas. In terms of the light poles, per the FCC policies, all the light poles in Encinitas are available for their cell phones. That's the policy. And so, and even in this document, it says it's not exclusive to Ubiquia if another company wants to come in and use an antenna. So they're all available in some way. With regard to Ubiquia, one of my colleagues wrote Jared and asked for information, and Ubiquia replied, and Jared shared that information. Here's the skinny. "Once access is secured, Ubiquia will notify wireless carriers that Encinitas streetlights are now available for installation of their 5G small cell technology." Okay? So this contract is like really slick, because it's going to set up Ubiquia. Their bottom line is the number of antennas that they put their small cell attachments on. So this is going to mean a lot more antennas in Encinitas, and a lot more radiation. With the installation of their small cell devices, there will be an infrastructure, and the combination of their devices and infrastructure constitutes a smart city grid network that will then support all the other devices that they sell, surveillance cameras, and you name it. So I would say please consider no, or table for a greater discussion of the greater implications for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel Soares, followed by Rich, Richard Van Every, and then Elena Thompson. Let's see, Elena.
How about we just say no to all of it? It's been overwhelming in the last five years, and I'm like, why is everybody trying to sell us something? Do we need this? I wrote down a couple points. Again, good evening, councilmembers. My name is Rachel Suarez. I'm a business owner here in Encinitas, and I've been a resident in Cardiff since 2003. I'm here to urge you to vote no on item H.J. allowing small cell 5G antennas on our streetlights. First, the long-term health effects of constant exposure to 5G frequencies are still unknown. The FCC standards are decades old and based only on short-term healing, heating effects, not the biological impacts we're learning about today. Until independent research confirms safety, we shouldn't experiment on our community. Second, mounting these antennas throughout neighborhoods can harm wildlife and our environment. Studies show microwave radiation can disrupt birds, insects, even trees. Third, these installations are moving forward without real public consent. I just heard about this from one of my best friend's mother, Patty over here, and I'm so glad she called. I haven't been doing my due diligence as a citizen here. So there's no real public consent benefiting private telecom companies, not local residents. And finally, this infrastructure is the foundation of future smart city systems. Again, how about we say no? Data collection, sensors, surveillance sold to us as efficiency. Once in place, we lose local control over how it's used. I know this. I use digital marketing. We're, they're putting this in to gather data from us so they could sell us more things. They're putting this in, I hate to say this, but, and I don't like to say this, because I wake up happy every day, it's the beginning of a digital prison. Like, let's just stop it. We don't have to do anything today. So let's slow down, prioritize people, health, and transparency over profit and convenience. Thank you.
Richard Van Every? Richard Van Every? Oh, okay. And then I don't see Elena.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for holding space for this very emotional issue for me personally. I've been a part of the public awareness activism of this matter for, well, since it really rang true for me in 2019 and through COVID. We basically were all caught off guard on how the telecom industry just thought they could just steamroll more antennas all over while everyone's on lockdown. So I'm in strong opposition to this measure. I'm asking you to say no. As an independent documentary filmmaker, like I said, I've been tracking this, and I'm working on a documentary on this very matter because it's a global issue. If anyone hasn't seen the film, theagendafilm.com, you can find it there. It's really a comprehensive look at what the bigger picture is and what this infrastructure is heading towards. Ubiquia, this technology represents a serious misleading incursion into our public privacy and potentially much worse, according to the U.N.'s 2030 Agenda. 15-minute cities are a reality that is already beginning to take place. As proposed, the Small Wireless Facility Agreement disguises a surveillance network under the guise of infrastructure modernization. I'm curious if you're aware, I doubt most of the public is, but recently, the city of San Diego had a contract with Ubiquia, and they were installing these antennas on streetlights, but they weren't transparent. They were quietly equipped with cameras, microphones, and collected pedestrian vehicle and environmental data without public awareness and informed consent. When the program was exposed, it revealed that thousands of sensors were converging imagery and metadata accessible to multiple agencies. Despite claims of suspension, video access for police continued outside of the formal contracts undermining transparency and oversight. So the city of Encinitas now is being asked to authorize a 25-year agreement with a company that has already demonstrated deceptive data practices and weak accountability. The framing of this proposal and this administrative or non-project action under the California Environmental Quality Act conceals its real implications: continuous data collection for, from our streets, neighborhoods, and citizens. This is not a mater, you know, not simply an upgrade. This is something that the city should deny and educate the public more fully on, and I'd love to have further discussions in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes speakers, and then Scott Campbell and Andy Shul both registered opposition, but did not wish to speak.
Okay, Councilmember O'Hara.
So this has been an interesting and fascinating agenda item that, you know, at first glance appears very mundane. And before I go further in this, because I know this has been the case for me, I want to acknowledge senior management analyst, Mr. Jared Elmore, for all your work on this because I certainly feel like it was for the rest of us. You walked into what looks like a contract agreement, and now we're talking about science and sociology and other aspects in consciousness and, you know, good conscious decisions that come into this that you probably didn't expect when you took this on. And so I appreciate your hard work on this. I think we have enough questioning of what we're doing here to hit the pause button, in my opinion. I'm going to oppose this. If someone else puts the motion forward to oppose it, I will back them up, but that's where I lean right now, in opposition of it, but I'm going to let somebody else make a motion.
Motion to oppose, but.
Tell you what, so I'll go next, and, boy, I've been fighting cell phones in Encinita since 2004, and I've sat out there showing pictures of them. The health we've gone through, I can't use that. If we use that, we actually put ourselves at a legal disadvantage. But there's, I have so many questions about this project and this policy. First of all, we adopted, I don't even know when we adopted, it was sometime right after 2004, we adopted the wireless, the cellphone ordinance 9.7 in our municipal code. And then in 2019, we added outside of the code a policy. And so what we're here tonight doing is looking at that policy and that code and trying to apply it to a new form, a relatively new form, 2019, new form of small cell 5G data. But, I mean, first of all, Ubiquia is not even here, and I have so many questions for them, what their plans are, how big it's going to be. 25 years for a contract? Way too long. This, this, this technology will come and go. We'll be on 10G 25 years from now, so I'm not comfortable with that long of a contract. They need, Ubiquia needs to be available. More importantly, I think we have a fund, and I also need to know the status of 10G, which actually got purchased by Crown Castle in 2011. So we did it in 2006. They got bought there under a totally different company and name. And I need to know, are those 13 still out there active with essentially 5G? Other question, are cameras permitted? I would put that sensors and other services are not allowed on this platform without written permission in any license if we go that path. Like I say, I have questions, questions, questions. I can't move forward with this. I would, and I'll alter your, I'll, friendly amendment to what oppose. I think we table it and come back with, and I don't know whether it's in a month, two months, or in the new year, and bring it back then, because this is not an active contract right now, and quite frankly, unless Ubiquia shows us what interests they have and they show up for a meeting that, so they can answer questions. You know, I think, I think staff needs time to get answers to all the questions I just posed, and I'm sure there's probably even more I haven't thought of, and then bring it back at an appropriate time, and that will give the citizens enough time to look at all the different laws, probably need to talk to a lawyer, a telecommunications lawyer, and I've done that in the past. But I'm trying to think. Oh, question is, and I think we do have a right to do this as a city. We already have one vendor, and they've used 13 poles. I would put a maximum number of poles that they can use, and that number may be 20, maybe 100, I don't know. I have no idea what Ubiquia wants to do if we go forward. Number two is, we should be able to limit the number of vendors, much like we don't allow any, any, all cable companies to come in. It's almost like a franchise. So we ought to decide as a policy and update the current policy and/or code to limit the number of small cell vendors that we license. So that's another way to put a box around this. So lots of questions. I don't have the answers, so I would table it until we can get a lot more answers here on these questions, and that would be adding to your opposition if you want to either second what I just said, or I can second, if you agree with what I said, I'll make it as a friendly amendment.
Yeah. Could we just say no to this and then have the whole thing come back? We don't, they're going to have to present something else. Why do we have to bring it back at all?
Yeah, the reason I'm going that route is, having gone through with the T-Mobiles, the Horizons, and quite a few, you know, dozens of planning commission discussions, in order us, in order for us to deny it, we'll have to make legal findings. If we were to base legal findings on health, we would be in a very bad legal situation. So right now, I think we just don't have enough information in front of us, hence I'm going the table route, and we'll bring it back. And if we, at that point, we can consult with lawyers.
Yeah, okay, let's bring it back.
And see what grounds, what findings we can make. So that's why I'm going that route.
Got it, let's do it.
So, so I take that as a, is that a second to my motion, basically? Or my second?
Adjustment, or I don't really care, as long as it gets done.
She promoted, and then.
I made a friendly amendment, and I.
Number O'Hara, you seconded, correct? Or no?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Oh, you did?
Yes, and I'll accept the.
During seven, okay. So it's to table the item at this time.
And then get answers to all these questions about what is it, you know, what do we want to do from a policy standpoint? Do we want to limit it? 25 years is too long. I have so many questions, and we don't have the people here that can answer it.
I'll just say table the item at this time to address council concerns raised at the meeting and to return it at a future date.
And then to continue on Michael's, I think I want to do that first. If staff then thinks would support a workshop, a public workshop on it, we could, we could bring it back to a public workshop, which is what I think Michael Schwabe suggested, and then work through it there, and then bring it back to adopt based on, but I've got lots of questions.
Quick point of order for 10 o'clock.
Oh, good point. So we got to do a quick little housekeeping. I need, well, we have a motion in a second. Do we have much more discussion on it, or?
I'm next in the queue, and really, all I was going to say is I support that motion, and I would like to make sure what they bring back is also a discussion on health issues. I respect the opinion that we can't deny it based on that, based on the legal standing, but I also would like more information on the impacts to the city as far as ultimate construction and what the San Diego, the city of San Diego's experience was with this that appears to have been stated by one of our, one of our speakers.
Thank you, I lost that one, and I.
And then I'll yield.
And Councilmember San Antonio? If you can do it in a minute or less.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, couldn't we just deny it if we think there's no need for it?
I, based on my personal experience on the planning commission here, that we need to make some level of finding.
Or like that we don't need the coverage? Could we just, could that?
And that's, that's basically part of the recommendation. We'll come back, we'll get legal advice, and go from there.
Okay.
So, so we're basically tabling it and taking it off calendar, and we'll bring it back to, I think, a public workshop is what I would recommend.
In 2027, or are we?
I didn't say that.
Good.
Yeah, so, anything else? So we have a motion in a second on the table, and then we'll get to the, so we'll call a question. So this is basically to table it.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. So now, now I need a motion to extend past 10 o'clock.
Motion to extend past 10 o'clock.
And?
Well, past 10 o'clock, but no, absolutely no later than 12, or 11:30. Like, absolutely no later. I was, can we say 11:30?
I'm with you on the midnight.
11:30, is anybody 11:30 here? Do we have any?
That's fine, I accept the amendment, let's go.
11:30 over here.
Okay, we have to boogie, so 11:30 is the, call the question? And we appreciate the brevity, but, so, okay. So we'll get more answers. So moving, we're going to, we're going to move on, so we got to keep working. That brings us to item 8K.
And we have one.
And be sure to reach out to your council members. We have one speaker and 8G.
8K was one, was removed by a member of the public, and that was Patty Stottlemyer.
Okay. And this is a memorandum of understanding between the city of Encinitas and the Encinitas Chamber of Commerce for the retirement and senior expo to benefit the Encinitas community and Recreation Service Manager Hammer. Patty, Patty, are you, you pulled this?
Yes.
Did you pull item 8K, the MOU?
Yes.
Do you need a staff report?
No.
Okay, then you have the floor, three minutes.
It's a lot of money, and we don't need any more LED lights. Thank you.
Wrong.
But that?
Did I, did I?
Oh.
I said 8K.
8K.
Did you, did you mean to pull?
Did you pull 8L? Patty, did you pull about the Encinita sign, or what were you wanting to talk about?
Oh, the, the Encinita sign.
Okay.
Right?
And we already passed it.
Oh, you passed it?
Yeah, because we didn't know it was, we didn't, we had the wrong letter.
That's 8M.
With that, I'll entertain a motion for 8K.
I move approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? Let's call the question?
We're moving now.
I'm trying. Go ahead and vote.
I'm 8L.
Okay.
And that was Ellen Burr. Do you need a staff report? Okay.
And 8L is, I'm glad I read the title. 8L, just to check, is to authorize agreement for downtown sidewalk cleaning services?
And who was K? Who was, lines and shape?
I always told my kids, nothing good happens after midnight, so be home. Great idea to clean the sidewalks. I just had one question about that. We have a lot of outdoor restaurant eating situations, and I just wonder how their responsibility for keeping their spaces clean on the sidewalk and the right of way impacts this contract or vice versa? Because I don't want to be paying more money because some guy's making more money, dishing out food on the sidewalk I'm supposed to be able to walk on. So I want to make sure that we aren't paying my money to clean up their mess at a higher price. So that would be my first question. Secondly, regarding the garbage cans, it's a minor thing, but I take the Cornish cutoff to go to Vons all the time, and there's a series of garbage cans. This little map is only showing one at either end that they will be cleaning out. I don't know, maybe the Enlightenment people put up their own garbage cans up there where everybody parks. They're all always overflowing, but as long as we're cleaning out garbage cans, we should clean them all out, and not just the ones on either end of the street. So, so please, don't spend my money if you don't have to.
Wrong one. Ellen, before you go, Cornish cutoff, you lost me on your Cornish, you mean going up?
If you're on, if you're on Santa Lejo.
Okay.
There's a little cutoff.
So the map that we're talking about here tonight doesn't go anywhere near there, right?
Oh, yeah. There's two down there.
On the map?
For cleaning out the garbage cans?
She's saying add those to the trash can remove, or clean out.
Okay, I didn't realize.
She wanted those to be added.
Okay.
No, no, there's, there's two, they're on the map already.
Okay.
At the south end and the north end.
Yes, I was looking more at the power washing and all being downtown.
Oh, no, that's, no, I talked about that first, so.
Okay.
That, that concludes speakers, and then we did have Molly Hentley unregistered in opposition, but did not wish to speak.
So I, oh, Councilmember O'Hara.
So I actually brought this to staff's attention, the exact thing you just brought up. I believe we will address this going forward as a council and look into streets. At the same time, I think in this contract at the moment, we need to make sure for drainage purposes, for cleanliness purposes, that the city, that the city is responsible for cleaning the sidewalk to the standard that we want available for our residents rather than leaving it to private entities. But I will say, I don't think this is the last you've heard of this, of that point. This is a subject that is going to come back to us downtown, and so we will begin, at that time, when we revisit that, this may be, that may be more appropriate discussion, or input for that discussion. Yield.
Okay, and then I'll go. I had a couple of questions I talked to staff about. Number one is there was a, the service was also in front of the fire station, which we don't use right now, so it was, it's only segment, and I think we got that corrected, and it's not included. I had a proposal tonight, right now, and I'm doing a lot of work down on Second Street, talking with people down there, especially in, along in front of CRC, and there's a lot of debris. And there's a lot of debris from the ficus trees and right now we're only doing it six times a year and it costs about $5,000. And I was wondering would it be of value to go to, and I've talked to property owners down there with the ficus trees, would it be worthy to go to, to 12 times a year and add $5,000 to this contract? And so I thought I'd propose that if there was agreement on the council, we could bump it tonight and increase the frequency to every month. Yeah. And the complaint came from a couple of people I talked to down there. They didn't bring it to me, but while I was down there, their comment was how much the fruit stains the walk and how it's covered with stuff. And they were actually worried about people slipping. And I thought, yeah, you know, every time I'm down there, I see ficus droppings. Those trees are beautiful, but they're huge. So I got one nod, yes, okay. So I would, I would move approval with the addition to the contract to go up an additional 5,000. And was there?
Yep, all right. So we talked about that, so yeah, it looks like it would go up an additional 5,000 because it was 5,000 for this six times, correct? Oh, Eric Scott.
We can actually pull up a table that can, that can depict the change in cost to the contract if you want to.
Did you do that? Yeah, because the other part is to, with the approval of 8M tonight with the gateway sign, part of the maintenance of the gateway sign, we're going to have them clean it. So we can remove the gateway cleaning from this and then if we go ahead and add the extra tree, it actually only ends up, yep, again, around $1,200 there. But, so we do want to make sure that we get that authorization though from council so that we don't have to come back with that.
Second.
So that's exactly my motion.
All right, thank you.
So with that, got a motion second? Any other comments? No, call a question?
Motion carries unanimously.
And that takes us on to, now we're going to go to 10C first.
Yep.
Okay. So, sorry to keep you, you guys, you know, you're young, you don't need sleep. We're just getting you ready for college. College and maybe in one or two of your cases, future mayorships, so. So item 10C is Youth Commission Amendment Recommendations for Ordinance Number 2025-09 and contact person is Recreation Supervisor Camarina. So start with a staff report?
We don't have a formal staff report other than what is written, that the item that you had brought to review, whether you wanted to add alternates, was taken back to the Youth Commission and they were given an opportunity to review and vote on that themselves. Per the report, they did not recommend that, but a few of them are here tonight to give some additional information.
Very good. So with that, we're doing this under public testimony? Or are we having the?
We just have some speakers.
Speakers, yeah, exactly.
So we do have four, Lola Hubbard Hubble, Dylan Yarborough, Quaid Kelly, and then Lars Willigan.
Hi, I'm Lola Hubble. I'm the Vice Chair of the Encinitas Youth Commission. First, I'd just like to thank Mayor Ayers and the City Council for allowing us to have a voice in this. We really appreciate you allowing us to represent the interests of our commission before you tonight. At our September 3 meeting, we voted unanimously with one commissioner abstaining to recommend that City Council not make the changes to the ordinance. We believe that alternates would be more necessary if we had an overwhelming amount of applications, but last year, we couldn't even fill all nine regular spots. To give you some historical data, in 2022, we had 10 applications, 2023, we had 11, 2024, we had 13, and 2025, we had eight in the regular round and two for the open spot. Now, I believe that this would be a completely different situation if we had 15, 20 applications per year, but the fact of the matter is, we don't. And while we appreciate the council's efforts to increase youth civic engagement in Encinitas, we don't think adding alternates is the wisest move right now. In my opinion, we should instead direct these time and resources that we would spend recruiting alternates, advertising, to expanding the reach of the Youth Commission, to going to local schools, to making it so that we do eventually get to the point where we need to add alternates because that is the goal, where we're having so much interest that we need alternates, but we don't have that right now. And Quaid will share later some positive ways that youth can be involved in our city outside of the Youth Commission because there are many, many more ways to serve your city other than being on an elected commission. I'd also just like to mention that in the event that we do get alternates and that ordinance passes, we are absolutely willing and ready to collaborate and work with the new commissioners. Again, thank you so much for hearing our voices and I appreciate you allowing us to have a voice and experience being at a city council meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dylan?
Good evening, or I should say good night. Good evening, Mayor Ayers, City Council members, and city staff. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight and for all you, and all your support in youth voices in Encinitas. My name is Dylan Yarborough and I'm currently a senior at San Diego Academy and a proud member of Encinitas Youth Commission. For me, being here tonight is more than just a role. It's something I've looked forward to for years. When I was younger, I used hear my two older brothers talk about their experience on this commission, about how they worked with the city, shared ideas, and made a real difference. Listening to them planted a spark in me early on. In middle school, I knew I wanted to be part of that, to represent the next generation and help make my community better. So as soon as I got to high school, I applied for Youth Commission and got declined. I applied again the next year and got declined again. But every time, the message I got back from city leaders was the same. Don't give up, your time will come. So I kept building, learning, and leading. Through my time as ASB president, through school, and through community involvement, until finally this year, as a senior, I was honored to be appointed. Now standing here today, I realize how much that journey has taught me. It taught me that leadership isn't about titles, it's about persistence, service, and the desire to create something meaningful. This past week, I was honored to receive the Encinitas Rising Star Award from the Encinitas Chamber of Commerce. That moment meant a lot to me because it wasn't just about personal recognition, it was about what it represented, that youth in Encinitas are doing big things and our city believes in us. The Youth Commission gives students like me the platform to learn, to listen, and to lead, and it helps us turn our ideas into real change. And it helps the city hear directly from the youth who live here, learn here, and will one day lead here. As we look toward the 2025-26 year, I'm excited to work with my peers and continue that legacy, building stronger connections between students and city leaders and helping make Encinitas a place where every young voice feels heard. Thank you again for your time, your leadership, and for believing in the next generation of Encinitas. Have a good night.
Wow. Let's give them another hand, guys. I was like...
Really?
I get to be with these guys every, like, once a month and I've learned so much from them and it's so hard to follow them, but I'd figure it out, figured I'd just mix it up and be me, so here's a quick demo. But one, the individual, every person matters and everyone brings something unique. Two, the community, our schools, neighbors, teams, and people that make up this incredible piece of paradise. And three, the government, the structure that keeps us together and adapts to serve. So when we're working together, that's when the magic happens. The rhythm, the synergy, the momentum, and honestly, that's what I'm all about. I just want to thank you all so much for inviting the Youth Commission to make a recommendation on the proposed municipal code. It gave us a chance to look back at the history of the commission, which has been going on since 1998. Over the past 27 years, the number of commissioners has shifted six times, from nine members to a whopping 17. In this case, it's not about the individual, it's about what is best for the existing commission as a group. For 2025 to 2026, I'm recommending we keep it at nine members, no alternates. We've really got an inspirational group of student leaders, I mean, another hand for them. Like, they're just an example of how incredible our commission is. And I think our focus is expanding engagements across all ages. So this includes more volunteering, more cross-generational connections, and more youth getting involved with the city we all love. We invite members of the community to attend our meetings, but do not foresee any issues with quorum or absentees. And we've really got a great thing going. Thank you so much for your time and for supporting the next generation of Encinitas's leaders. Do we have any questions we can answer for you today on this? I'm going to be, any questions will be directed at Vice Chair Hubble for this.
We can bring you back up if we do.
Sweet.
Yeah. We have one more?
Good evening, council members. Thank you for listening to me speak tonight. This process has taken some time and being part of it has taught me a lot. I've attended City Council and Youth Commission meetings to watch, listen, and learn. You asked the youth commissioners to share their feedback about having alternates join them. Only two commissioners spoke, but everyone who voted, voted against it. Chair Kelly mentioned my age as his reasoning and Vice Chair Hubble said that nine seats were enough. I'm asking you to still consider the amendment. The proposal isn't about age. The seats are open to all students in grades eight through 12 and adding alternates wouldn't change that number of seats or votes on the commission. See the addition of alternates as a form of mentorship, a way to get more students involved and allow them to learn the process before having a full seat at the table. I'll admit, it's hard for me to keep pursuing this idea after the Youth Commission's recommendation, but I truly believe it's a good one. This year, there are five new commissioners and three seniors who will be graduating next year, encouraging younger alternates would help bridge the gap between terms and continue the more important work that goes beyond one group's time of service. Council members, I hope you'll see that this small change can make the Youth Commission more inclusive, more prepared, and more connected to our students in this city. Thank you for your time.
Very good.
That concludes speakers.
Okay. I guess I'm up first and, boy, wow. I think all four of you, you know, I couldn't be prouder if I were your parents. So, you know, you guys all, and I think you're seeing an example of reasonable minds can disagree and we're seeing that here and that's the way it works. That's the way, that's what we're going through every day up here, so it's pretty cool. And you guys were all so eloquent and cogent and on point. I would only ask Kelly or Quaid, where was the unicycle? I mean, come on. You know, so up your game next time. And thanks for staying late. I'm going to support doing nothing because I do think there's, the history comes back to me and I thought your point, I understand and keep applying the lesson you, Yarborough, what's your first name?
Dylan.
Dylan, that's right. That Dylan learned of, of apply, decline, apply, decline, accepted. That is one of the things I learned early on in probably high school or college and it served me well. So, you know, keep getting up and going back and keep applying. That's how you, that's how you succeed in life, even more than smarts or anything else. So I'm going to support the recommendation of the Youth Commission and I will recognize Councilmember O'Hara.
Okay. Well, this is a tough one. I want to talk about the principle and I'm going to start off with our first three speakers and our first three commissioners and thank you for showing up and coming here today. I want to point out there's only three out of eight of you here. And I think, I'll start off, I'll start with you, Ms. Hubble. We couldn't fill the applications and now you're saying you want to turn away someone who actively wants to participate. It contradicts itself. Expanding the reach requires resources. People are your best resource. It's a huge lesson that the commission teaches you, right? I think that's such a big thing that you are resources for the city, for your schools. And to be a better resource, you want the best resource out there, the person that's willing and excited to participate. That's what all you are. That's why you're so stellar at what you do. Lars, you yourself wanted to be on the commission in middle school.
You said Lars.
Lars, yeah. Lars, you said you wanted to be on the commission in middle school and you got declined, and you got declined.
No, it's Dylan.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dylan, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm very, very sorry, I wrote the wrong thing down. Dylan, you said you want to be on the commission in middle school and you got declined, and you got declined, and you got declined. That doesn't have to be everybody's experience. I disagree with our mayor who thinks people need to keep coming back, people need to show that they want it. They show that they want it by showing up every time the bell's rung for them so far. So I think you have to be really careful to make sure, and I think you saw this tonight with all the discussions we had, that we have different experiences up here. And what we all experienced to get here is very different roads. That's really important. That's what makes this really, that's what makes us function. That's what made eight, was it eight D about the roundabout take an hour?
Yeah.
But that's important. That's government, that's civic duty to do that. And so, so be careful, whether it's in this arena or anywhere else, to hold somebody to, well, this was my experience. It won't, it won't serve you well. And Quaid, I love the juggling, always impressed. You know, you said you get to be with this group once a month and learn from them. Right, exactly what you said, I think. We don't want to deny it from somebody else. What we want is to deny somebody else the opportunity to learn from amazing kids or young people. And you said you want to give more volunteering and have more youth outreach. And here we are, talking about denying somebody an opportunity to do all of the things that you all three said were important. It was also reported by staff that part of the reason for the denial was that the applicant was in eighth grade that we were considering. And this, that falls out of the scope of any discussion and probably staff should have let you know, this commission is for youths, seventh grade to 12th grade. So that should have been taken care of. I, obviously, I care a lot about this commission and I know you guys do an amazing, an amazing job at it and we're proud of everything you do. I'm going to just make a quick statement. We're going to this decision not to have an alternative, an alternate. I was in favor on September, I believe, of number third or fifth of an alternate when the commissioner, commission's appointment, alternate, the commission's appointment, the two commissions' appointment are for one spot and agreed with the council, grudgingly, I should say, agreed with the council to offer the commission an opportunity to consider the role of an alternate to the Youth Commission. And I said I would do it because I thought you, I thought you would value the importance of inclusivity and not exclusivity. It is your place to make a recommendation and I value that you took the time to think of it. I value that you took the time to vocalize what you said and to come here and, anytime you stand up with that podium, no matter how comfortable you get, your heart races. So I appreciate that. I'll express that my hope for our Youth Commission is that they're governed by a commitment to community, the community that we and they serve, the community that we're all part of, that they foster youth participation and passion for civil matters when there's an opportunity to engage and inspire citizens as young as seventh and eighth grade and up to 12th grade. My hope today is that opportunity is seized. I want you, as a commission, to continue to succeed and because of that, I recommend a second amendment to our, a second, second... I recommend a second amendment to, or a second, second motion to, or replacement motion to recommend that we discard the recommendation and we vote to have an alternate on this commission. I would like to see, I would like to see these-
Point of clarification, I didn't make a motion.
Okay, so that's my motion then. And I would love, I mean, to me, this is the opportunity for you guys to set the future of this commission, take this kid under your wing, and give him all the knowledge you've obtained, and help him take this commission where you never dreamed it could go at that point. It's a stepping stone for this commission, and I just look at it that way. So, that's my motion. I appreciate-
If I could just make one point of clarification, this is not about a specific individual, because when we, if the council brings back the ordinance, it does need to go back out for advertisement.
Yeah, I'm sorry, did I say that we, I just said to appoint an alternate. Yeah, sorry, that's what I meant. Yes.
And just to clarify too, if, depending on what council does tonight, if council does want to go ahead and do an alternate, we're going to have to take the muni code back. So, we'll have to take that back, you know, introduction, adoption, and yeah, just want to make sure.
Perfect.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Well, you guys all just brought up the life in the room with your presentations. So, all four of you, thank you. We asked you to consider this important decision, and when I did that, I did it with the full intent of following your lead. That was my opportunity to say, tell us your best here. Give us your best. Give us what you, your rationale, be eloquent about it. And you did all those things. And so, I appreciate that you've given it thought, and you worked with your commission, and you're bringing forward the recommendation. And I want to hear more from the Youth Commission. So, I hope you go from strength to strength and build over time. And Lars, you inspired me too. Holy cow. I look forward to what you'll do here in the city in the future. No matter what, there was no, like, predetermined that you would be on this as an alternate anyway, as was just clarified. But I see that you have a lot of potential, and you're very eloquent about how you speak. So, thank you for that. Like I said, I want to embrace your decision-making, and I want to empower you on this. And I appreciate the recommendation you put forward. And I haven't heard a second, did I hear a second?
Not yet, no.
I would align with the mayor behind going with your recommendation that you brought forward to us tonight.
Okay. Councilmember San Antonio.
Awesome presentations. Deputy Mayor Lyons is right. I mean, you definitely hyped the room up. I'm hyped up. I'm stoked. What I can tell you is that I, you know, I see the energy, Quaid, that when you, I mean, juggling brought that energy, got my attention right away. Not that you two didn't, but I, you got me. You hooked me. But Lars got up there. I, you know, I see a very similar energy, and I, you might not have juggled, but I felt it. You know, I felt the energy. And I feel like, you know, to what, what Councilmember O'Hara said, this is a really great opportunity. The mentorship portion, to me, is a big deal. When I was applying to be a firefighter, my road was hard. It was lots of turns, lots of no's, lots of no's. But that doesn't have to be everybody's road. Sometimes it's not. Sometimes guys get picked up right away. It doesn't have to be everybody's story. And I can appreciate the recommendation. I do. The staff brings us recommendations all the time, and we don't always follow the recommendation. And that's just life, I guess. I mean, we have, we make our own decisions up here, and we take our own experiences, and we interject that and mix it all up, and how comes the outcome? I really did feel that the mentorship portion of this, because without a mentor for myself, I feel like I needed that. I needed somebody to help guide me. I needed somebody to help, to look up to, to guide me through some decisions. And I know you guys are, I can see how dynamic you guys are. And as an eighth grader, you've got somebody in a different school, whether it's Lars or anybody else, a younger, a younger person, that's somebody that's going to bring that enthusiasm to their school and to their peers, and hopefully that brings more engagement for the future. So, there isn't a low application turn in. But for me, I have to go against the recommendation. Like I said, I do appreciate what you all had to present, but I second Councilmember Schafers. Oh, here, sorry.
Mayor's not sitting down, but I'm next, so. Yeah, the idea is-
The screen, correct.
I am going to go with the recommendation, because we gave you guys responsibility for us to sit here and turn it. I don't think it's appropriate. I think you guys made the choice. I will say, I hope that you're listening, you know, to the conversation up here. I hope future, possibly, hopefully, future youth commissioners would have this understanding and kind of take that direction, I think, as we grow the process and the program. I know that it's suffered over the last couple of years. I think a part of that may have been COVID. We got up to 17 at one point. So, to help kind of feather that along, to bring somebody along, would be appropriate. At this point, talking, you know, the city manager said, for us, it's change the ordinance, have a first reading, a second reading, we'll be on the other side of Christmas. So, at that point, it'll be more than likely this won't happen until, realistically, probably till February, at the earliest. So, the understanding is, I think that being involved, there's nothing stopping you from coming to the commission meetings, looking up and trying to build this from the nine people, to hopefully someday that we get 20, 25 more applications, and being able to use those applications to go further. So, I'm not going to go against your guys' decision, because I think you guys have, you've had your conversation, and however you guys chose to do that, and we didn't give it to you to take it away. So, that's the burden of your own leadership, and I just hope that there's a way to be the inclusive and try to grow the program in the direction of better. And that's kind of, in general, for everything. So, I'm going to go with the recommendation tonight. So, thank you.
We can just vote on it, either way.
So, you have a motion.
So, we've got, Councilmember O'Hara still wants to go.
Yeah, I just- Well, I want to have a time machine and go back and please say stronger emphasis on my, my allowance of letting you guys push it through last time. So, but I don't have that. So, I have to look at, part of what we're supposed to do is guide and advise young people in these roles. And guiding and advising them sometimes points out when they call out decision-making that's not based on arguable comments. Staff will tell you, staff will say that in the, in the report, that one of the reasons that they did not want the alternate was because in this case, they were concerned it would be somebody in seventh or eighth grade. Correct? Yeah, was one of the items brought up. Staff was clear that the council's open, I mean, the commission's open to middle school. So, good. But that was one of the reasons that was given.
It was one of the things that were brought up at the first meeting, when you were first talking about alternates. So, that was a public comment that had come up. So, it was out there in the public. It wasn't like the commission discussed it during their meeting.
Okay. Well, that's different than what was reported to me in my meeting, my briefing. I apologize. I talked about, I talked about that topic in the briefing, that it had been, it had been out there, it had been discussed. So, I apologize if I made it specific.
Yeah. I'll mention as well, when you thought, you asked us what our opinions was, I did say they were all high school students. I wasn't representing them saying that. That was my representation and my perception. Perhaps that's why they were leaning towards that.
Okay, but now we're sitting here talking about it, and that being an issue. It would have been nice to have been clear on that. So, yeah, I think, well, I'm going to yield. I certainly want to, when the next time the agenda comes up, open the space up for alternates. I believe in inclusivity and not exclusivity, and I feel, to some degree, that's what this is, and I'm sad that the rest of the council's not jumping on to, to make a decision on this, that supports that. But that's why we have five of us up here.
That's right. Yeah. And so, what you're seeing is an example of where we disagree, and we talk about it. I look at it, we put faith in the current commission, and you deliberated, and you came back with a recommendation, and I'm honoring that, and I'm honoring, you know, I think you did a good job. And welcome to government, by the way. That's how this works. So, with that, I will call the question. And so, we've got a motion on here to modify the recommendation and add the alternate. And so, call the question?
So, the motion on the floor, now just to be clear, is to discard the recommended action from the Youth Commission, and then to direct staff to bring back ordinance 202509 for consideration.
Okay.
And the motion fails with Schaefer, Lyons, and Ayler's voting no.
And then, in the interest of time, I'll make a motion to do staff recommendation, which is the Youth Commission recommendation.
I'll second.
I got a second, and let's call the question. Unless there's discussion.
And the motion carries with San Antonio O'Hara voting no.
Okay. With that, thank you for staying so late, everybody. We appreciate it, and look forward to good things out of the commission and out of the public to continue. Oh, well, yeah, sorry. Yeah, you can't leave yet. So, on to item eight, 10D, which is the Youth Commission work plan outcomes for fiscal 2024-25, and proposed work plan for fiscal year 2526. And I don't know if we're, is staff report coming from staff or from Youth Commission?
Youth Commission. Good evening again. As the Chair of the 2025 to 2026 Encinitas Youth Commission, I'm excited to give you a quick update on our work plan, and trust me, it's busy. Last year, we had Chair Dave Loschensky set the bar high. He served four years and helped launch awesome programs like Techy Tutors and STEM Library Engagement. Both are still going strong. We had education and city processes work together to create updated bylaws, which we are excited to see approved soon. One of my favorite moments was hearing from Senior Rohan Fadnis speak on environmental stewardship in his nonprofit Way Zero. After that meeting, I connected with Rohan with city leaders, which led to a city partnership, which created the first ever TEDx Encinitas Boulevard this past June at the library. Another standout was the Geocaching Project, created by Commissioner Chet Kinselberg, which added exciting engagement to the art night experience. Over 130 points of interest were explored, and 25 people completed the first full adventure during city art night. Pretty impressive stats for a youth-led idea. It is now extended to other city events like Sokovia. Building on that momentum, the 2025 to 2026 work plan is streamlined, bold, and ready to make an impact. Our goal this year is to combine our skills, creativity, and authentic youth voices to create positive lasting change in the community. We're asking for approval of the work plan so we can get started, because if there's one thing this group knows how to do, it's get things done. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have Councilmember O'Hara?
Diving into the work plan at this point?
Yep.
Okay. So, first off-
Let me just check one thing. Are there any public, okay, yes.
So, item number two, something I started to engage the Youth Commission and the Senior Commission together for intergenerational programming. And I'd like to add that to this list. I think it's a great project. I think they're going to crush it. Really excited to see it come here. But we've have got the Youth Commission and the Senior Commission working together to create short videos that we will loop at the beginning of council meetings, three to four-minute videos, that will loop, that are updates on the city as far as upcoming events, highlights, holiday parade when it's coming up, that will loop at the start of our council meetings, as part of a sharing what's going on in Encinitas, and getting them some faces to see out there besides our five mugs, before the council meetings. So, I'd like to add that to number two. And then, number six, financial literacy. I, and I think our confirmation that they're looking, they're challenged by resources kind of supports this, per their own words. I think number six shouldn't necessarily be there as its own category. I think we should move financial literacy speakers into one of the other categories, take it out of its own box, and I, and I believe city sports and youth scholarships should be under civic youth and community engagement. So, I'd like to kind of remove box six. I don't think it makes sense to increase item numbers if resources is a challenge. But if there are places we can stream those into other boxes, I think that seems a little more appropriate.
And where would you put the financial one?
Financial literacy, you could really talk about, and so, obviously, the, you could put that under civic and community engagement. And we talked about, one of the reasons for this, I discussed in my briefing, was that financial literacy speakers and events for students could be very broad. And what do we want those to be? Is it, for example, is it a book club? Is it a, is it a bank coming and talking about their, how credit checking account works? It's a very broad topic. And so, I think, biting off that entire apple of what that means, it doesn't sound like they have the reach and resources to do at the current time. But I think you could plan, as part of your civic and community engagement, you could plant it in there, and then it takes a little stress off this being as large of a box as anything else on there. In other words, as large of a commitment.
Okay. Anything, and it sounds like you're putting both of them in number, in the first box, and then under one is additional subbullets.
Yeah, and I mean, I guess you, yeah, that's probably where I would put the second one, which I think is a really valuable opportunity.
Yeah. Anybody else? Any comments? How about a motion? Convert that, an approval motion with those-
Yeah, and I'm really excited to see this coming to plan. I think you guys are going to do a fantastic job. Probably, I know the project we have started already is going to be gangbusters. I know the Senior Commission is excited, so we're already kind of getting to work on this, and I'm really excited to see them, like, off and running.
And I would open it up to any youth commissioners, whether you want to comment on the change. It's more informed than it is an actual function, because the bullets still exist, they're just in different categories. So-
Yeah. I think representing the Youth Commission here, I can't obviously speak for them. I know this is something they're very passionate about, a project that, I mean, as a Youth Commission, our goal is to provide everyone the opportunity to work on their goals and aspirations, and bring something in the Youth Commission. And I know this is something that a lot of people were interested in, but I also know that consolidation was something that we had been trying to complete for the last two years. And we went from nine goals to six right now, and I know we were hoping to continue that consolidation. So, I do believe that the commission would support financial literacy, specifically going under goal number one, civic and community engagement. And I think perhaps making that a subcommittee within that civic and community engagement, but that, I don't believe that needs to be approved, just necessarily that that isn't one of the goals. It's just moved into a work plan goal, rather.
Would there be a way to just put financial literacy into the other five?
Yes.
Basically, sitting down with Tom or somebody along the way, or whoever it is along the way, but to get- Basically, sitting down with Tom or somebody along the way, or whoever it is along the way, but to get some financial understanding of each one of these projects and understanding how these are funded and, you know, everything coming into this. So your financial literacy, you might have a speaker, so you could add one bullet somewhere just to get an actual speaker in and to get something upfront, but this would be a way that a part of the process of the other five would actually just be getting the understanding of how the finances make this go. That would be some financial literacy.
That sounds like a good idea, and I'll second it.
We have a motion. Councilmember O'Hara.
And I'm attempting to second the motion.
So we have a motion in a second.
Sure.
Any other comments from other Youth Commissioners, or, like I say, it's not a huge change anyways, so, but if you wanted to, now would be a good time to come up.
Hi again. Councilmember O'Hara, I just wanted to clarify something that you said that you wanted to also consolidate intergenerational under civic and community engagement, or did I mishear that?
So there's a project that's already begun that I wanted to place under there, because it's already in progress, and placing it there now will help it continue and forward.
Great.
Yeah.
Perfect. Well, that was it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. So we've got a motion and a second?
And I just wanted to clarify, Councilmember O'Hara, so on number two, what was the, the current project was creating videos?
So we're intergenerational programming of three to four minute videos that will be run in a loop prior to council meetings. They'll be given the information by the city staff per the direction of the city manager and who she allocates for that, and they'll be able to use Pacific View for that. They'll be able to do on the street reporting. Obviously, the video will come back to, well, the city manager will choose who it comes back to for review to make sure it can go up on the board before the meetings, but then they'll play that, and it's just a really great project. I think it'll be a lot of fun. We're working on it. It should be really, really cool to do. It's going to give people a chance to see the city in a little bit different way, rather than just come to a meeting and see the items on the agenda, but actually see, like, here are some people out in the city talking about the things that they do, the things they're excited about, the odd things that we offer, and maybe and hopefully feature a facility that needs a little bit more featuring and more people know about it than it's already getting in the process, so. So it's a joint project, but that's what we're adding.
So we'll add that to number two, and then on financial literacy, I just wanted to clarify, so it was to add a financial literacy to all the items on the list? Or was it just to add that under civic engagement?
Under item one, civic engagement, yes.
Just wanted to make sure. Great, thank you so much.
Okay, so a motion, second. Call the question.
Motion carries unanimously.
Very good. That brings us to item 10A, which is introduction of ordinance 2025-14, amending the Encinitas Municipal Code 18.08.0.080 regarding sewer service charge calculations for customers with sub-meters. Contact person is Senior Management Stratotikus. Wait, it is getting late, I'm sorry. This is a public hearing, and so we will have the staff report given. I will then, I will then ask council to disclose any other information they have received that is not included in the staff report, and then we'll go to the preliminary questions before we open the public hearing. So with that, we'll start with the staff report.
Good evening again, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilman. I'm Jared Almore. As you know, Ashley Stratotikus was ill this evening and couldn't make it, so I'm batting cleanup for her.
Okay.
But with that, we'll get going. We're here tonight to consider an ordinance, and so that's going to call for a hearing. We'll open the hearing. You'll take any public comment, close the hearing, take your action, and then we'll be on our way. So this evening, we're introducing an ordinance, 2025-14, and we're making some very small revisions to the municipal code, or we're proposing some very small munition, or revisions to the municipal code, pardon me. There's a section of the, first of all, this was posted at City Hall, this was published in The Coast News, and because we're taking action on the code, not the rates themselves, there is no 218 notification requirement, so we're in the clear for that. Section 18.08.80 subsection A calls out single-family residential customers in relationship to our submetering program. The city has a submetering program that allows folks whose use profile of the sewer differs significantly from their use profile of water, which is a complicated way of saying that the out doesn't match the in, so this is typical of customers who have lots of irrigation. There are other use cases, though. So because the predominance of our submeter customers are residential, this language entered the code in perhaps not the best place. It was our understanding that the intent of council was to make the submeter program available to whomever wished to apply. And so we're proposing some revisions. We've consulted council and think that this is probably the best course for the city to take in order to relieve any ambiguity, eliminate that, so it's clear to everybody in the city that the submetering program is available to them regardless of which type, which class of customer they are in our sewer sewer program. So the language here, as it is right now, is on your screen, and then what we're going to propose is that you strike single-family residential from the section that we noted there and move that whole block of text down to the bottom of the subsection. So it's clear that it applies to all of the classes of customers that are mentioned above it in the code. So with that, staff, or I'm sorry, council, I'll pass the ball back to you, and you can enter, stay in discussion and question.
Okay, we'll start down at the far end. Do we have any disclosures?
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
And I have nothing to disclose, and do we have any preliminary questions? We have no preliminary questions. Do we have public speakers? I will open the public hearing. I will close the public hearing. Cool. Counsel, action and discussion? Can I have a motion?
Motion.
I got a motion in a second? Any discussion? I don't see any. Call the question. Very good. We will move on to item 10B, which is introduction to ordinance 2025-12, approving a sewer reimbursement district on behalf of property owner Taveras and adding section 18.12.470 to the Encinitas Municipal Code. Contact person is Senior Engineer Zilke, and this is not a public meeting, correct? I don't need to go. This is just an ordinance, okay. So with that, we will start with a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and members of the public. My name is Eric Zilke, Senior Engineer in the Land Development Division. This evening, I'll be presenting on the introduction of ordinance number 2025-12, which establishes a sewer reimbursement district, essentially a mechanism for a property owner who funded a public sewer extension to recover a proportional share of costs from future users. So in May 2022, the city issued a permit for Mr. Pedro Taveras for construction of a new single-family home at 252 Rancho Santa Fe Road. As a condition of approval, he was required to extend the public sewer main from Rancho Santa Fe Road to serve his new home. The Encinitas Municipal Code authorizes the city council to establish a sewer reimbursement district whenever a private property owner installs a public sewer main that could also benefit neighboring properties. Establishing a district provides the framework to impose a special fee on any parcels that later connect. The proposed district that we are discussing tonight applies to the new public sewer main located along Rancho Santa Fe Road in a Leavenhein, shown here on the map. Construction began in July 2023, and the property owner, Mr. Pedro Taveras, funded and built approximately 345 linear feet of new eight-inch public sewer main. The project established an extension of public sewer service to four adjacent parcels. One is the applicant's property, which is already connected, and then three neighboring parcels are now eligible for a future connection. All other nearby parcels are either already served by the city sewer system or covered under a different reimbursement district, so they are not a part of this one. After Mr. Taveras completed the sewer construction in 2024, city engineering staff reviewed the contractor's invoices to verify the total cost of the public improvements. The verified construction cost for the public portion of the work was determined to be $156,787.67. It's important to note that the private work was excluded from the reimbursement calculation. The four-inch private sewer lateral that serves the Taveras home was considered a private connection and therefore not eligible for cost recovery under the municipal code. Only the publicly dedicated main line was used to establish the reimbursement amount. When the total public cost is divided by the four equivalent dwelling units, or EDUs, the proportional cost came out to $39,196.92 per EDU. The applicant's proportion, one EDU, was deducted, leaving a gross reimbursable amount of roughly $117,590.75. After subtracting the $250 admin fee for each of the three potential future connections, the net reimbursable amount is $116,840.75, which represents the maximum the applicant could recover over the 20-year life of the agreement plus the 6% annual simple interest. In practice, any of the three neighboring parcels that connect to this public sewer extension in the future will be required to pay the roughly $39,000 of reimbursement fee plus the 6% annual simple interest. Per the reimbursement agreement attached to the staff report, Mr. Pedro Taveras will receive the reimbursement assessment fee proportional to his contribution to the total construction cost, which in this case is 100% of the roughly $39,000, because no other property owner contributed to the construction costs. Payments are collected at the time of the new sewer connection, when the new sewer connection is made, and distributed semiannually by Cardiff Sanitary Division Admin Staff. So in conclusion, staff recommends the introduction of ordinance number 2025-12 to provide for reimbursement for construction costs of a new sewer main extension on Rancho Santa Fe Road. This action simply authorizes the reimbursement framework, and it does not commit the city to any funding. So at this time, I'd now like to ask if there's any questions.
Any questions? Deputy Mayor Lyons?
I don't have any questions. If there aren't any public speakers, I'd like to move approval of recommended action.
Do we have public? Okay, so.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. I think, I think Councilmember Schaefer got that just under the wire, so. Yeah, I don't have any questions. This is very standard, been done many, many times, especially in a Leavenhein, so call the question. Excellent. That brings us on to item 11. Informational item. Tonight, we have one informational item, which is the Encinitas Habitat Stewardship Program Annual Update. And Park Operations Manager Norgard, you've got the floor. And just because you have a half hour doesn't mean you have to take the whole half hour. Just going to say.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I have a quick 90-minute presentation for you.
Very good.
As mentioned, my name is David Norgard. I'm the Park Operations Manager. I'm here this evening with Jade Wall, Project Manager from Recon Environmental, to give you an annual update on the Encinitas Habitat Stewardship Program. I'll go over a very brief overview of the history of the program, the work that's been completed, our maintenance monitoring, and our next steps. Importantly, the goal of the Encinitas Habitat Stewardship Program is to address basic property management and stewardship on city-owned property which contains sensitive habitat. There are five main categories within the Habitat Stewardship Program. It's invasive plant control and removal, trash and encampment removal, fencing and signage, erosion control, and fire abatement. For history, in 2009, staff presented the Subarea Plan and Open Space Management Plan. In 2010, city council adopted the early MHCP Implementation Program, which is now the Encinitas Habitat Stewardship Program. In 2014, an RFP was released for the initial site assessment, which outlined really what the Encinitas Habitat Stewardship Program would accomplish. In 2015, the draft initial assessment was submitted to council. In 2019, that assessment was accepted by council. In November of 2019, an RFQ was released for general services and maintenance to implement the program. And in 2020, council approved a contract with San Diego Botanic Garden for the first portion of implementing Habitat Stewardship Program. In February of 2022, we amended the contract with the Botanic Garden to add more time to the initial contract to account for some COVID-related delays. In 2023, we amended the contract with amendment number two, which added scope for a new area, which became, or which is Drainage Area B, or the Moonlight Parcel. In 2023, we advertised an RFQ for environmental project management services, and in 2024, council approved that contract with Recon Environmental for as-needed project management and environmental services to provide specialized oversight, qualitative monitoring, biological and permitting expertise. And in June 2024, amendment three was added to the garden's scope for Oak Crest Park. As a general overview, over the last year, the Botanic Garden has dedicated more than 706 hours of staff and volunteer time towards the Habitat Stewardship Program. They've hosted more than 23 volunteer events, including our local schools and community groups to help supplement the restoration activities. Volunteer efforts have removed a total of 81 cubic yards of non-native biomass this year. Invasive plants are removed, and native plants are installed to limit erosion and reestablish native habitats. The garden installed approximately 950 plants this year. All of the plants are sourced from local populations within Encinitas and grown by the garden. I'll provide a little bit more detail on each of these sites. At Cottonwood Creek Park Unimproved, which was our first site, the Botanic Garden has continued to build upon prior year efforts, including native plant maintenance and invasive plant removals. 55 container plants were installed, along with 200 nuttle oak scrub acorns directly sowed into the site. Native plant species are beginning to recruit new individuals in the absence of invasive non-native plants, indicating self-sustaining native plant populations. Native plant species are now the dominant plant type across most areas that have been weeded and planted. The Habitat Stewardship Program has established approximately one acre of suitable habitat for the coastal California gnat catcher within Cottonwood Creek Park. At Drainage Areas ANC within Cottonwood Creek, Lee's Belzavirio have been observed, and Excel and the garden have conducted invasive plant species removal, removal of trash and debris throughout the site. At Cottonwood Creek Drainage Area B, or again, the Moonlight Parcel, the garden and Excel landscaping have focused on invasive plant control, erosion control, trash and debris removal and restoration. The garden installed over 550 plants in the area that was previously occupied by the Canary Island date palm stand. We had some pretty heavy erosion there as well, which they've helped to fix. A total of 20 invasive plant removal events were conducted by the garden. Excel landscaping also installed fiber rolls to help with some of the erosion. At that site, we've already created a quarter of an acre of pollinator habitat within the drainage through container plantings and seeds. Non-native species removals have allowed native vegetation to recolonize areas that have been previously dominated by invasives. Oak Crest Park work is focused on rare plant preservation strategies, access control, and overall habitat improvement. The Encinitas Bacillus is a federally listed threatened and state-listed as endangered, while the Delmar Manzanita is federally listed as endangered. while the Delmar Manzanita is federally listed as endangered. We've installed erosion control BMPs, such as gravel bags, to reduce erosion throughout the trail. We've also installed additional fencing around the backris and installed roughly 880 linear feet of additional fencing throughout the parcel to deter unauthorized access through this area. The garden installed 140 container plants and removed another 17 cubic yards of invasive biomass. Implementation activities at Saxony Road were completed during the summer of '25. A coastal California gnat catcher was heard within the Saxony Road parcel. The Botanic Garden removed 22 cubic yards of invasive biomass and walked the site to remove trash and debris that was present. Recon has worked closely with the city and the garden to develop a phased approach for Saxony Rose, Road for restoration activities. I'll hand it over to Jade with Recon Environmental for an overview of their services.
Hello. As David mentioned, my name is Jade Wall. I'm a Restoration Project Manager with Recon Environmental. First off, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here to highlight the work that we've been doing under the Habitat Stewardship Program, or the HSP. We've really enjoyed working on this contract and having the opportunity to collaborate with the city of Encinitas, as well as the San Diego Botanic Garden. So over the past year, we've focused on integrating stronger project management tools and structured monitoring into the HSP. We now conduct biannual monitoring, once in January and again in June, and this is to help guide management, management priorities. The January monitoring happens after winter rains, and that's when we can identify areas needing non-native species control. And then our June monitoring helps plan summer and fall activities like erosion and access control, fire abatement, or restoration efforts such as seeding and planting. These two check-ins help us stay proactive and strategic throughout the year, and we also use data collection tools like WildNote and ArcGIS field maps, which I'll highlight on a later slide. We've also been expanding monitoring into new open space areas, or the areas that are going to be next up on our HSP actively managed parcels, and we're updating those baseline surveys so that the maintenance contract, maintenance contractors have a clear understanding of what expectations are for each of those sites. In addition, we've strengthened partnerships with groups like the Cottonwood Creek Conservancy, and we're working closely with David and the city to explore grant opportunities that can support future program growth. We have also implemented, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Too long of a pause. We've also implemented two key planning documents that keep the program organized. First is our annual work plan, so this outlines proposed activities for the years, assigns responsibilities, and helps make sure everyone's aligned on their priorities. Second is the annual report, so we completed our first annual report in August, and this summarizes everything that we accomplished during the year and also provides recommendations for that next fiscal year. Lastly, we've prepared the scope of work for Indian Head Canyon implementation activities, and once that's finalized, we will begin coordinating the kickoff meeting to help schedule and coordinate those implementation, implementation activities for fiscal year '26. As I mentioned on the previous slide, to support monitoring, we use two main digital tools. We're using WildNote, and this is a cloud-based customizable platform for field data collection. This lets us record notes, photos, and recommendations while we're in the field, and then it also produces a very clear PDF that we can share with the city and the garden. We also use ArcGIS Field Maps, which is a mobile mapping application that Recon uses to capture real-time spatial data, data directly in the field. So together, we use these tools to generate PDF forms and figures that can clearly show where management actions are needed, as well as record management actions that have also been completed. So these two figures are a great example of the figures that we can create using that ArcGIS, ArcGIS field data that we collect in the field. So the figure that you're looking at now is actually what we included in our annual report, and it's showing the Oak Crest Park and Encinita Senior Center parcel of the HSP. And this is highlighting the work that was completed during fiscal year '25. So as you can see, we did fence installation, and these are things that David highlighted earlier in his slide. We also did some invasive species removal, active restoration, erosion control, and all is, all of that is guided based off of those monitoring efforts that we do throughout the year. So overall, these updates have provided structured monitoring, data tools, and clear reporting, and I think has brought clearer project management resources and collaboration among the team for the HSP. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask at the end of the presentation, but I'm going to hand it back over to David, who will highlight some of the city's accomplishments and next steps for the program.
Thank you, Jade. Lastly, a quick look at progress at staff level. In October 2024, we released the RFQ for general services maintenance, so this is actually a new contract that we let out. The original contract for the Botanic Garden had reached the end of its life, so we read, read, advertised another one. They were subsequently rehired as the best qualified. In February this year, council approved the contract with the garden. We've established quarterly meetings with the Cottonwood Creek Conservancy. We walk the site every quarter with city staff, Recon Environmental, and both of our contractors. And we've updated our website to add a page to educate folks on the Habitat Stewardship Program. Staff and Recon have also been working to develop a grant for Indian Head Canyon. We've met with the Wildlife Conservation Board. They have a rolling grant that's not tied to a specific date, so we've been working with them to understand what grants are attractive to them and what scope that we have that could work. On this slide, it highlights the yellow and green areas that show some potential areas where we could do some restoration and enhancement. Currently, we're thinking that this grant could possibly be approximately $300,000. The board has indicated that it would require a grant, or a grant management potentially tend to 20% to be competitive. We'll continue to develop that scope and return to city council for future authorization to apply. Lastly, for next steps, we're preparing a scope of work, as Jade said, for Indian Head Canyon based on updated baseline surveys. We anticipate returning to council this year to approve that contract amendment and subsequently begin implementation. Maintenance is ongoing in each of the sites that we've discussed, and updated qualitative monitoring will occur in the spring and update in the annual report, as we mentioned before. And that concludes our presentation. We're available for questions.
Any questions? Yeah, I think, I love it. I mean, I just love it. So I can tell you that there are private lands similar, similarly impacted, and I got to tour one out on the edge of Olivenhein, where the, the homeowners association owns 10 acres, and they came in and they absolutely obliterated it as a fuel modification, disturbed the, the dirt. It's going to have weeds after this, this rain. And I just, I see where we're going with this habitat stewardship program, and, and I think that business model will spread beyond public, and I think private homeowners associations will get into the same, same realm, you know? And I saw a bad example just a few weeks ago. I went hiking back there with one of the homeowners association people, so.
Right. You know, I'm so proud of this program. We're going from strength to strength, and even now, you're beginning to get in a position, you've got your, your, your feet under you, and you're applying for some grants. So I look forward to where the possibilities will lead us in the future. I think that when we were able to bring Recon on, that we really did get a needed service as far as measuring and monitoring, because that's where we learn, well, what have we achieved? And then how, you know, and we iteratively adjust that as we go along. So not to, not to delay this, this is our last item, but I do want to say that I think we're at a point where the city council in the future should look at what other open space properties do we have in our city? Maybe ones we've added since this plan was first brought forward and approved. And I'll be continuing to talk to our city manager about the best way to move forward with seeing if we can bring some other city open space into this stewardship program and make sure we do the best we can for having quality open space ecology.
And that would be a great thing to talk about when we get into a goal-setting session early next year, so in not too many months. So with that, we appreciate the report. I think we will move on now to item 12. We don't have any council-initiated items. 13, county, city council member reports pursuant to AB 1234. Start at the far end.
I attended a Sandag meeting. I guess this would be a great time to say that Sandag awarded the city $104,000 for, from the Public Beach Impact and Mitigation Fund, to augment the design and construction for the cost of the staircase at Swamis. Let's see. I also attended the San Diego Community Power Meeting. We are currently recruiting for a representative for the community advisory committee here in Encinitas. They do a variety of different things, advise the board and engage in public conversation, support and attend community outreach events, provide monthly, monthly reports, and share info to the community regarding rates, a bunch of other things, but we're currently looking for an Encinitas representative, so. And that's, that's all I have.
Councilmember Schaefer.
And I attended the Regional Solid Waste Meeting last Thursday, and there's a lot, a number of new bills have been pushed down for regional solid waste, and those will be implemented here in the next, you know, year, two years, depending on the, the direction, but all in good hands. We are taking over the financial requirement of that for the next, what I think about five years is kind of the average that we're going into, so. Yep. Anyway, that's it.
Councilmember O'Hara.
At the end of last week, despite being on a podcast and despite traveling around the state, I saw Gavin Newsom sign 800 bills into law, including SB 79. I hope we wake up as a state.
Deputy Mayor Lines.
I attended the San, San Diego County Water Authority Board Meeting two weeks ago, and then this morning, I attended the Encina Wastewater Authority Meeting for the Capital Improvement Committee.
Okay, and going back before the Sandag Board Meeting that Councilmember San Antonio attended, I attended the September 26 Sandag Board. Various project updates, including the Otai Mesa Port of Entry East Project, and then an update on the draft 2025 regional plan that's out there right now, being reviewed. I also attended the October 3 policy meeting for the Regional Planning Policy Group that fed into the decision that, that Councilmember San Antonio talked about. And then the third item I did was yesterday, I attended the, the Encina Wastewater Policy Finance Committee, where we discussed and approved changes to real estate policies, mostly applicable to the quote-unquote "south" parcel, which is a large vacant parcel immediately. It's part of the main campus. And because we've come to the conclusion that using it for recycled water is probably 10 to 15 years, maybe even 20 years out, we're going to look at ways to increase revenue generation off of that without dedicating it. In other words, try and maximize, because any revenue we generate lowers our fees. With that, we'll go to city manager report.
I just want to give a big welcome to our new deputy city manager, Mike James, who has stayed for the whole meeting. He's in the back. Mike joins us. He was the Assistant City Manager in the city of Pismo Beach. Mike also was an officer in the Army, and he worked in cities such as San Diego, Lemon Grove, and El Cajon, so we're very excited. Mike joined us on Monday, so we're excited to have him as part of the team. And it's nice to say that our entire executive team here now in the city of Encinitas has been filled, so just warm welcome to Mike. Thanks for hanging in there till this late, so thank you very much.
Okay, and city attorney reports.
No, Mr. Mayor, no reports.
No reports. City clerk report. And, and, and we will tell, welcome Mike, and tell him that we're getting done early tonight, by the way. So with that note, I'll adjourn.
We finished early just for him.
Yeah, we're getting early, yeah, yeah.